This was the sixth consecutive year in a row that a team from Florida was in the.
Yeah, it's Tampa, which we don't care about them. And then the Panthers. We made it three consecutive seasons, lost the first one, won the last two. Yes, if you can't tell from my face, I stayed up, watched it, and I'm very tired. Sorry, guys.
Congratulations. The champions of the world for the second time in a row, and it gives us all of us here in in the state of Florida, but particularly here in Broward County, a lot of reason to be proud. So, big round of applause for world champions. And to kick it off today, we will start off with the role. So, Madam Clerk, if you would please call the role.
Commissioner Good.
Here.
Vice Mayor Hernandez.
Present.
Commissioner Rodriguez.
Here.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Happy to be here.
Mayor Castillo.
Yes.
City Manager Dodge.
Here.
City Attorney Goran.
I'm here.
We have Cor.
Thank you very much. Today, we have Eden Serreg, who's age fifteen. She is homeschooled, and she has agreed to sing the National Anthem for us and to lead us in the pledge. So, if you will all please stand for the pledge, and then please remain standing for the National Anthem. And Eden, whenever you're ready.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight o'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
That's Eden Serreg. Thank you so very much. Please all be seated. And today's the regular city, the last city's commission meeting before we break. We typically do not meet in July, but in July, we have, of course, our July 4th celebration, in which we will begin the kickoff for America 250. It'll be the 250th year, and we will begin that kickoff, which will end, of course, July 4th of 2026. And tomorrow, I'm heading off to Tampa to the U.S. Conference of Mayors meeting, where we're going to be talking about America 250. I remember, Tom remembers, the bicentennial. We were just children then. But but this is a big, big event, and lots to look forward to in the year ahead. We have the distinct honor to have with us today our State Senator Barbara Sharif, who has been a friend to Pembroke Pines for at least as long as I've been around. And she has some words with us now that the legislature has ended, and they've adjourned Senate Day, right? And she has some words for us, and please give her a round of applause. Our State Senator Barbara Sharif. Senator, there's a button there that says speak.
That's it.
You're on.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Thank you to all the city commissioners. It is an honor and a privilege to represent you all in Tallahassee. The city of Pembroke Pines is probably one of the most positive and progressive places that I've ever lived and ever represented. It was a privilege this year to work with the state senate. We passed a $115 billion budget, and while that is significantly less than the previous year, and it reflects a reduction in statewide spending, we were able to ensure funding for many of the city's important priorities. And this year, I'm pleased to say that in District 35, we have just over $10 million worth of community dollars coming back from the state to support programs that are important for the city of Pembroke Pines and the other seven cities that are in my district. But as a result of the advocacy efforts that this mayor and this city commission has made, we have been able to include significant programs that will help our charter schools. We had some program, some packages and some bills that were going to negatively affect our charter schools. And I'm pleased to say that those things did not make it through. And as a result, we have about a $1.2 million impact in a positive way to Pines Charter School. I want to thank the cities for engaging the parents of those students, because they sent the emails, they made their voices heard. And in this legislative process, that is probably one of the most important things. I know that people say that they're spamming us or they're annoying us, but I really take that to heart. And we count those emails, and we make sure that we know that when the majority of people agree or disagree with something, that we're making sure on the state level that we hear their voices. As far as the tax package, I know that's been the one thing that has been concerning to everyone and wanting to make sure that we pass something that would not only stabilize property owners, but also keep public safety and cities whole and looking toward, you know, positive budgeting outcomes in the future. And we passed a $1.3 billion tax cut package, which we made some permanent tax cuts to some things like making a permanent back-to-school sales tax holiday, making sure that there's some vacation items, tickets, social events that you continue to have sales tax on for a certain point in the year, vacation packages. And so, we have done some things to try to lift some of the burden. We are going to come back and discuss some property insurance issues for next session, because we know that that's something that we got a lot of feedback on this session. So, we want you to know, we've heard you loud and clear. Property taxes has been a concern for everybody, not just property owners. But we have enlisted the help of a survey company to go out and see what other states are doing and to give us some comparisons to come back and see how we can make things better in terms of property tax. So, we didn't make any decisions in terms of cutting property taxes. I heard that that was going around, that we were going to cut out property taxes completely. And I want to let you know that that's not happening. We are studying what is going on and how we can make it better. And other than that, I think that we had some clarifications in the tax package that would help Pembroke Pines in terms of making sure that we have affordable housing and supporting what this progressive city is doing to make sure that its residents continue to enjoy low taxes, but a great quality of life and affordability is one of the number-one things that affects us in the state of Florida. And so, with that, I know that you all have a very long meeting tonight, and I just wanted to come and just give you some good news. And if you had any questions, I'll be here for a little bit.
Senator, I just want to thank you for everything that you do for us in Tallahassee and at home. We met up there, and you have been a fighter for the city of Pembroke Pines. I've seen it with these eyes. And very, very thankful. Not only did you fight hard, you got things done that we really needed to get done. For all of that, we thank you very much.
Thank you for having me. Thank you.
Does anyone else have any? I'm sorry. There were a couple of other questions. I'm sorry.
I just, Senator Sharif, which you now own that title for life. But I just wanted to make a comment. You know, as the mayor said, you do fight for us significantly. I could tell you this entire session, I kind of had my eyes glued into the Florida Channel. And if anybody knows what the Florida Channel is, it actually shows the committees and the sessions real-time. And some of the things that you were confronted with, I will tell you, you, people will, if they watch that channel and watch you, they will know that you are clearly supporting and representing them in the best possible way. And I just want to thank you for that and tell everybody, Florida Channel, Senator Sharif is the star.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mayor.
Yes.
Senator Sharif. First of all, the fact that you are always there, not just for us, but the community, and I say that because of the amount of events that you attend here in the city, not because you have to, it's because you want to. Your leadership, it's refreshing to see bipartisanship in a world of politics now in America where, you know, it's us versus them. The amount of work that you were able to accomplish crossing the aisle was remarkable. Standing up for the right thing, for the right reasons, as Commissioner Good was saying, is, I know that's who you are, but we got to see it on a much larger stage. You are, you're no longer a freshman, and I'm looking forward to, I'm looking forward to that sophomore year. It's not going to be a sophomore jinx. It's going to be, a sophomore is going to be getting a lot more things done. I will say this. I advocate this to every time I have the opportunity. We all have hurricane insurance. We all have shutters. We all have different types of shutters. I've been asking for years, for those who have impacts, give us more discounts. For those who choose not to put their storm shutters up, don't give them anything. There's ways that we can modify our insurance without destroying the industry and finally on the federal level. Hopefully, we'll see some leadership and get a windstorm nationwide policy like we have flood, and that's going to dramatically reduce the cost. But again, Senator, you won't have to fly up to Tallahassee every other day, but I know that if called upon, you'll be there in a second. So, thank you for all you do for us.
Absolutely. And I just wanted to add that we have an additional $400 million that was set aside for this year for hardening and for mitigating homes that have experienced damage as a result of hurricanes. And that information is actually listed on our website, and we've been emailing it out as well. So, I'd be, I'm going to send that out again. Thank you.
Thank you so much for the service that you give to this community, and not just for the items that the city brought forward, but for our community partners, especially for Children's Harbor. I know they had personally spoken to me about, we were, you know, looking at their options. And I'm so thankful that they were able to bring it to your attention, that you were able to work across the aisle and get that done, because that is especially unique service that the city, within the city of Pembroke Pines. And I think it's really important that we not only focus on what the city is asking for, but what our community as a whole is asking for. And I know that you and the majority of the Broward legislatures are pushing against the defunding of property taxes. I was watching some of the commentary during the committee hearings on that. And I just hope that in the future, we continue to be as strong-footed on that item, because I know that while that wasn't something that was decreased this session, I don't take it away that they're going to try to decrease it next session or the session after that. So, I'm really excited to have you as a partner in that fight. And hopefully, the rest of Broward follows through and the rest of the state follows through, because it is so important to be able to fund fully our services, especially our public safety services. We have obviously a lot of officers here. And if we do not get the property taxes that we need, we cannot fund our police properly. And that is a safety issue for the community as a whole. And I'm very excited to have a fighter like you to be able to push that forward.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
I call you enough, so I'll talk to you at another time. I thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Items to be pulled from the agenda.
Mayor, we have item 45. That was pulled by administration.
Thank you. Item 45. Okay, so now we have our police promotional ceremony. Chief, podium is yours.
Good evening.
Good evening.
It's a good day. It's a good day because, as a police chief, along with our city staff, we get to introduce to our community one of our very own. And tonight, I get to promote him into a formal leadership role. As always, we want to express our gratitude to our wonderful residents. We are very thankful and proud of all of you for the support you give us, our city staff, and of course, our pines-worn, professional civilians, and volunteer workforce. Our city really is looked after every day and every night by the very best, many of them in this room tonight. To support the person I will be calling up right now, Officer Jorrel Rivas, please come up to the podium. You can bring your family up, family, if you'd like to join them. Officer Jorrel Rivas joined the Pembroke Pines Police Department as a police support specialist in January of 2014, and was sworn in as a police officer in September of 2016. With him today are his wife, Brittany Rivas, daughter Kaylee Rivas, son Kalel Rivas, mother Arodis Valle, father Hector Rivas, father-in-law Stephen Lees, sister Jasmine Rosado, brother Justin Rivas, grandmother Margarita Serganes, grandfather Juan Alvarez, and brother-in-law Jose Rosado. Did I miss anyone? All right. During his career, he has served in the following positions: teletype operator, police service aide, patrol officer, honor guard, SWAT, field training officer, our recruitment team, and our homeless outreach team. Officer Rivas studied criminology at the University of Miami. He is a firearms instructor and graduated from the Broward Sheriff's Office SWAT School. As a member of our Broward multi-agency honor guard, he is only one of two trumpet players in our county. During his career, he has received numerous department awards and letters of appreciation from the community. It is with great confidence that I present Officer Jorrel Rivas to the city administration and our city commission, to our Pembroke Pines Police Department, and to the residents of the city of Pembroke Pines, as he enters this leadership role and the rank of sergeant. Mayor Castillo, will you please administer the oath of office?
Will you please raise your right hand? I state your name.
I, Jorrel Rivas.
Do solemnly swear and affirm
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
that I will support,
That I will support.
protect and defend
Protect and defend.
the Constitution and government of the United States.
The Constitution and government of the United States.
and the state of Florida.
And the state of Florida.
and the charter and ordinances
And the charter and ordinances.
of the city of Pembroke Pines.
Of the city of Pembroke Pines.
that I am duly qualified to hold office
That I am duly qualified to hold office.
under the Constitution of the state.
Under the Constitution of the state.
and that I will well and faithfully perform.
And that I will faithfully perform.
Well and faithfully.
Well and faithfully.
Yes, you will. All the duties of sergeant of the Pembroke Pines Police Department.
All the duties of sergeant of the Pembroke Pines Police Department.
which I am now about to empty.
Which I am now about to empty.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Sergeant.
And who would you like to pin your badge? I guess my wife. Would you like to say a few words? Of course you can. No, you cannot read it.
All right, good evening, everyone. Before I begin, I'd like to thank Mayor Castillo, the city commissioners, City Manager Dodge, Chief Vargas, and the rest of the command staff for entrusting me with this new role as a police sergeant for the city of Pembroke Pines. I also want to thank all of you, my family, my friends and coworkers, and the citizens of this great city for attending this event. You know, one of the big questions that I asked several people when I received the news of this promotion was, you know, do you have any pointers on how I should prepare my speech? The general consensus was this, keep it under five minutes. So, with that said, I want to apologize to you, Chief Vargas. I know how much you want me to play the trumpet right now, but I don't want to make anybody upset, so I had to keep it under five minutes. So, I left my horn at home, but maybe some other time. But on a serious note, during my meeting with Chief Vargas and Assistant Chief Barnes, there are many great points and analogies that they provided about leadership. But the one that resonated with me the most is when Chief Vargas said something to the effect of, people with big hearts tend to become effective leaders. A big heart is a strong foundation for great leadership. He then went on to say that I have a big heart, and because of that, I have the potential to be a great leader here. Those of you who know me know that I'm confident, but I'm humble. I don't actively think about how much heart I have. But he made an excellent point. I care. I've always cared. I've always had a big heart. I've always cared not only for myself or for my coworkers, but for the people of the city whom I've taken an oath to serve and protect. From the moment I was hired back here in 2014 as a teletype operator to becoming a service aide and eventually going through the police academy and becoming an officer, I've always done my job with heart. Having heart helped me get through SWAT school six years ago. Just when I thought I was going to fail, I kept pushing, and I eventually passed. Having heart is what made me decide to become a field training officer to train newly hired officers and PSAs and to instill in them the importance of the core values of our agency. Having heart is what gave me the courage to bring my trumpet into La Carreta one day, just to play a song with a little four-year-old violinist who loves police officers. Who would have thought that a small gesture like this could have made such an impact on the community to the point where it became national news? I didn't. Moments like these are why I enjoy this job so much and why I take pride in wearing this badge. Of course, there are many individuals who have made a positive impact on me throughout my career, both past and present. These individuals who are ones who I've always looked up to, individuals who are so good at their jobs and have a wealth of knowledge. Fortunately, some of them couldn't make it today, but I'm still going to recognize them, you know, guys like, for my old squad, like Abby, Pedro, and Silver, Martin, Sanmarco, Rienzo. To my current squad, Hooper, Macedo, Lopez, Serrano, you are here. I saw you somewhere. Thanks for, there you are. Espinoza, of course, my buddy from day one, Tribu, Sergeant Tribu, my buddies from the academy. The SWAT team, obviously, there's a brotherhood there. Thank you guys so much for everything. You guys have always been there for me and have helped me become the officer that I am today. So, thank you, guys. There's so many others out there. You guys know who you are. To my family, I want to thank you all so much for all that you've done for me. My parents, Mommy, Papa, thank you so much for always being there and for raising all of us. I'm pretty sure having specific traits is hereditary, because my mom has the biggest heart out of anybody I've ever known. And my dad, who's a military vet and a natural leader, has had several promotions himself throughout his career before he retired. Jasmine, fortunately, my brother Justin missed his flight, so he's not here. But you guys taught me how to be patient and gave me a glimpse of what it'd be like to raise kids of my own one day. I know you guys thought I was being mean at times, but then again, what kind of a big brother would I be if I don't pick on you time to time? My twin brother Joriel, who also couldn't be here. Thank you for always being my sidekick in life. The Batman to my Robin, the Sub-Zero to my Scorpion. I finally made it, bro. To my beautiful wife, Brittany. This day will not be possible without you, from raising our beautiful kids and being the backbone of our family to helping me study for this exam. You've always been there for me. Pretty sure you know our union's contract and the legal guidelines better than I do at this point. So, don't be surprised if I call you every once in a while while I'm working and ask you a few questions. It's very smart. Most importantly to our kids, Kaylee, Kalel, I want you both to remember this day. Mommy and daddy always tell you, tell you guys to do your best and that you will achieve anything that you set your mind to. Daddy's wanted this for a long time. I did my best, and here I am. And in case you're wondering, we're not rich, okay? No, daddy just has more responsibilities now, but we'll have a few more dollars coming our way, but we're not rich. So, he really asked me that a few times, that we're not rich. So, I'm excited for this new chapter in my career, and I can't wait to serve the citizens of Pembroke Pines in this new capacity. You all can be sure that I'll be an effective and passionate leader, one who leads with heart. Thank you all again for being here, and have a good night. Thank you.
Congratulations. Okay. Commissioner Schwartz, will you join me? This is a proclamation of the city of Pembroke Pines, Florida declaring LGBTQI Pride Month. Commissioner, will you read the whereas clauses, please?
Sure. Whereas the city of Pembroke Pines cherishes and values the dignity of every person and upholds the importance of equality and freedom for all. And whereas the city denounces prejudice and discrimination based on age, gender, identity, gender expression, race, color, religion, marital status, national origin, sexual orientation, or physical attributes, as contrary to our shared values and fundamental rights. And whereas Pride Month traces its origins to June 1969, marking the anniversary of the Stonewall uprising in New York City, when LGBTQ plus individuals and allies stood up against systematic harassment and unjust laws, sparking a movement for equal rights. And whereas the city of Pembroke Pines recognizes and celebrates the many cultural, civic, and economic contributions that the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, intersex, and allied communities, whose presence strengthens and enriches our society.
Now therefore, I, Angelo Castillo, by authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Pembroke Pines, and on behalf of the city commission, do hereby proclaim the month of June 2025 as LGBTQI-plus Pride Month in the city of Pembroke Pines. Congratulations, and thank you all for the contributions you make for the community. And Alfred Alvera is here, and And Alfred Alvera is here, and commissioners, if you will all join me for, for this presentation. Thank you. That's for you. Congratulations.
Thank you. Wish to say a few words?
Uh, how much time do I have? Five minutes, 10 minutes? No, thank you, thank you, thank you so much. Uh, now more than ever, it is so important for cities like Pembroke Pines with large communities to recognize LGBTQ, uh, community and also Pride Month. It was almost 56 years ago that LGBTQ folks rise up in New York, uh, because they were fed up of all the treatment that they were getting from the police and from, uh, the members of, uh, of, of, of New York City Council and say enough is enough. So this is important. The LGBTQ community brings a lot to every single city. We're in progress, and, and it is not just a party. It is actually a community that is consistently thriving. So we appreciate to, uh, Mayor Castillo and all the commissioners for making, uh, recognizing Pride Month in June. And yes, we do get a whole month.
Alright, let's take a photo. Hold on, let me get one with my phone. Okay. Vice, uh, uh, Commissioner Good, if you would stay with me, please? And, uh, this is a proclamation of the city of Pembroke Pines, Florida declaring Juneteenth. And, uh, if you would please, uh, read the whereas clauses. Would you like to bring them up?
Yes, please.
Mashauna Hickley.
So this is the, uh, a proclamation for the city of Pembroke Pines, Juneteenth. Whereas Juneteenth, celebrated annually, on June 19th commemorates the date in 1865 when Union General Gordon Granger arrived in Galveston, Texas, more than two years after the Emancipation Proclamation, to announce that all enslaved people were free, effectively ending slavery in the United States. And whereas Juneteenth represents a powerful moment in American history, symbolizing freedom, resilience, and the ongoing pursuit of justice for African-Americans, while also serving as a reminder of the enduring impact of slavery and the continued struggle for equality. And whereas communities across the United States recognize Juneteenth as a time to reflect on the past, educate future generations, and celebrate the contributions of African-Americans to the arts, science, politics, education, and the cultural fabric of this nation. And whereas the city of Pembroke Pines honors this historic day and reaffirms its commitment to diversity, inclusion, and unity, values that strengthen and enrich in our community, and will commemorate Juneteenth with a special event on Friday, June 20th, 2025, at the Charles F. Dodge City Center, located here, where the history and significance of Juneteenth will be respectfully recognized and celebrated.
Now therefore, I Angelo Castillo, mayor of the city of Pembroke Pines, along with the city commission, do hereby proclaim June 19th, 2025 as Juneteenth. In the city of Pembroke Pines, it encourages all residents to honor this important occasion through education, reflection, and celebration of freedom and equality for all. Congratulations.
I had to pass it because I have 10 minutes. No, just kidding. So I, I just want to, first of all, thank, um, the mayor for his, um, vision and encouragement in diversity in the city of Pembroke Pines. It's very important. I want to also thank my commissioner, Tom Good, for spearheading the holiday on June 19th for the city of Pembroke Pines and supporting my vision. Thank you. I want to thank Christina Sorenson for giving our board, with Mr. Torari here, uh, the Diversity and Heritage Board encouragement and providing the recommendations to the board, uh, the commission board and the mayor, so that we could have something like this happen. And I want to also thank Holly and Fran for being such a delight to work with through this whole situation and celebration. They have listened to us, and we're going to have a wonderful celebration, so I hope to see you all there. I'm looking to see who's here, so you can't say you don't. And most of all, I want to thank my family, my adult kids, for supporting my vision, and my mother for always teaching me to be, be proud of my African-American heritage and the accomplishments that we have achieved through it all. Education has been the key to my family, from the time that my great-grandparents met and fam you, through all the generations of education. This is something that I will always be proud of. We follow in their footsteps, and, um, Juneteenth is just a celebration that everyone should continue to take part of. Thank you so much for this.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Vice Mayor, would you join me, please? And Assistant City Manager Sorenson, if you can come forward. This is a proclamation of the city of Pembroke Pines declaring National Park and Recreation Month. Vice Mayor, would you read, please?
Whereas parks and recreation is an integral part of communities throughout the country, including the city of Pembroke Pines. And whereas parks and recreation promotes health and wellness, encouraging physical activity and improving both the physical and mental health of residents through walking past sports facilities, swimming pools, we love our pools, and recreational programs. And whereas parks and recreation programming and educational activities such as out-of-school, uh, time programs, youth sports, and environmental education are critical to childhood development. And whereas parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide space, spaces for residents to connect with nature and enjoy the outdoors. And whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month, recognizing the vital role these services play in enhancing quality of life across the nation. Your turn.
Now therefore, I Angelo Castillo, mayor of the city of Pembroke Pines, along with the city commission, do hereby proclaim the month of July 2025 as National Park and Recreation Month in the city of Pembroke Pines, and encourage all residents to enjoy, support, and celebrate the benefits offered by Parks and Recreation Resources. Congratulations, and thank you for all you do.
Thank you. Hold that for me for one second. Thank you. Um, so Parks and Recreation Month is just one single opportunity for us to be able to share with you all of the wonderful things we do in our parks. Posted on our website and on our social media recently, we've listed a monthly calendar just for July that highlights some of the things that we do, just little call-outs. And if you want to check it out, it's, um, our staff put this together just to introduce you to the parks and some things that we do. But just some things to note, coming up recently, uh, coming up soon in August, August 16th, actually, on Saturday, we're going to be doing our grand opening for our brand-new community center, the Dream Park Community Center. So we're all very excited about that, should be on your calendars. And, um, I know that Commissioner Rodriguez is very excited that this, uh, park will be in her district, and, um, we're going to be getting the word out to our community. And also, um, just so you know, if, so if any of you have any little kids, Commissioner Rodriguez brought to us from DC, an idea, we're going to be doing, um, kid testers of the brand-new program, so look out for that. It's coming in the next couple of weeks. We're going to be putting it out there for about 10 or 15 kids in that community to sign up to test the playground. So some really fun things that we're getting ready to do. So, um, again, check out the website, we're excited, and, uh, anything on the website, anytime you want to know anything about what we're doing in Parks and Recreation, which is a lot, check it out on our website. Thank you.
Well done. Well done, well done. And I think that covers it, right? Yep. Okay. Okay, items, uh, at the request of the public, the first, I have several, uh, individuals signed up. Some of them are for items 29 and 30. You raise your hand if you signed up for 29 and 30. That's on the agenda. So the better way would be for me to wait for 29 and 30 to come up so that you can speak to the item. Is that okay? Or would you rather use your time now and then not speak? I think you'd rather speak when the item's up, right? It's more effective. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask you guys to hold on, uh, and I will call you up in the order that you were signed up when items 29 and 30 came up. I just want to make sure that everyone here, yes, they're all 29 and 30, and I won't miss any of you, okay? The other speaker is Ken Rivera. Is he here? And you wish to come up and speak? You're also for, no, you're, you're for 29, so you're going to be for 29 as well. Oh, okay, fine, good. Alright. So that's that. Commission Auditor Report.
Non-mayor.
They're here.
Oh. Not on the agenda, sorry.
Just press the button. And you are on, and welcome. It's always a pleasure to see you.
Thank you, thank you. We are excited to present the results of our...
Ma'am, tell us who you are, just for the record, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Kristy Clements, Managing Director with Forvis Mazars.
Eddie Castaneda, uh, Senior Manager, Commission Auditor's Office.
So, uh, in compliance with the timeline that we previously provided, we completed the OMI assessment, um, on June 16th, as we had committed to. We'll go through just at a high level, and then you can ask, uh, we'll leave time for questions. Our objective and scope was really focused on billing operations and revenue collection, customer service, and then monitoring and reporting on vendor performance.
Okay.
So real, general observations, uh, first, just, um, communicating and developing specific performance requirements of the vendor. Um, the current contract had a number of requirements that were more compliance-focused. Uh, we are recommending that some service-level agreements and KPIs, um, be created, or key performance indicators, um, around the vendor's performance and expectations, so that the city is able to measure quality and the effectiveness of their spend with this vendor. The second observation is really just enhancing, um, internal standard operating procedures that detail how those performance, key performance indicators should be reviewed, when to escalate something, and action that needs to be taken, so that it's consistent. Billing observations, um, enhance the review, approval, and analysis over utility billing. Um, they currently use a high-low report, but, um, we are recommending that the city formalize the review process and document expectations, um, because there's inconsistency or could be inconsistency with how it is reviewed and acted upon. So we're just recommending that, um, the process be documented and formalized. Observation four is the monitoring of manual billing adjustments. Uh, currently, um, users within the system have the ability to, um, credit or add miscellaneous fees or make adjustments to utility bills. We are recommending that that ability be restricted to just a few key individuals, and then the activity that is occurring, that it gets captured in a report and reviewed to make sure those adjustments are appropriate and accurate. Observation five is related to delayed bank reconciliations. The reconciliations have been finalized, um, the utility payments up to December. Actually, as of this week, we found out they were working on January now. But in an effort to add more precision to the reconciliation process, there have been some struggles with the Tyler system, and they are working through that, and management is, um, and trying to get those reconciliations current. Customer service, uh, right now, OMI, Doing Businesses Jacobs, um, they do not have a customer service, um, phone call center software. And so as a result, um, they do not have a way to systematically track their activity. You know, average speed of answer on calls, abandonment rate when someone doesn't get, um, their call answered, you know, that should be tracked systematically. Right now, the metrics that they are providing to the city are manually tracked and compiled into a report. And, um, so we are recommending that, um, there are additional KPIs added that should be expected of your vendor. These are very baseline KPIs that, that you should monitor, again, for performance and quality of your vendor. And, um, and then requiring or considering requiring your vendor to implement the call center software solution so that you can enable the tracking. Right now, you're averaging about 2,800 calls, um, a month, and that's, that's, we didn't validate that, but that's what's manually compiled and reported. If you had a report that was generated out of a system, we would be able to validate that a little more. And then finally, observation six is to identify and formalize specific and expected metrics in the call center function, and, and that's what I was referring to. Average speed of answer, handle time, et cetera, those are very baseline metrics that should be expected of really call centers of all sizes. Management has agreed with all of the observations and provided responses. And I'll open it for questions.
Yeah, I just, I just want to tell you, I, I very much appreciate the review. I love that, um, we're getting down to the identification of metrics. Identification of metrics always captures my attention because it's what, it's what we need to be able to take a look at something from a macro level. And everybody, everybody will agree that customer service is very, very important, but customer service costs money. Uh, sometimes it saves money, but, uh, it costs money to do it. When we want, it doesn't happen for free. There are investments that have to be made in order for a customer service to be, um, um, measurable. Otherwise, what you're subject to is the, the whim of anecdotal information, which is easily jaded by viewpoint rather than by facts. And so I, I'm very, very glad that, uh, the management has agreed with these points, and I look forward to, uh, seeing them incorporated into, uh, the next contract, and, uh, I think it's a very, very healthy report, and, uh, it reflects well on, uh, on the city of Pembroke Pines and, and our business partners. So I want to thank you very much for the review. Very, 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 very helpful.
Thank you.
Commissioners?
First, thank you, uh, so much for, um, your work. I wanted to focus in, yes, I, I agree with the mayor, especially on the metrics part. Could you go back to, you're number two? Think I missed it. Yeah, right here. Uh, recommendation. What are the best practices that you're referring? What are the best practices that you're referring to? Is there a standardized one?
So, generally, you should have your review process documented around expectations. Who's performing it, the frequency of performance, what items are being reviewed, items that fall outside of expectations, how do those get escalated? So, really, that's what we're recommending. Right now, they don't have documented, or formally documented, procedures related to how to review the reports that are coming out. The reports that are being provided by the vendor are informational, but the internal control is the action taken upon those reports, so the review. And so, we're recommending that expectations be detailed and documented for consistency.
Okay. On the call center, I think that's an excellent recommendation. Prior to becoming a commissioner, I, I experienced frustrations calling. This is several years ago, but I did wanna, I'm happy that you have that in there. And finally, could you talk about that, the, the software aspect of, basically, instead of manually taking customer service, calls, complaints, concerns, whatever they may be? First of all, when you say manually, are we talking about writing it down?
It's tracked in an Excel spreadsheet, so, yes, they're collecting notes and comments and call data-
Right.
-that is being tracked in note fashion, and then put in an Excel spreadsheet and sent to the city.
And forgive me if I'm asking dumb questions, but for example, if they, if, if the contractor were to use the sort of technology that you're recommending, typically, that is something that they do at their cost, put into, and use it at their cost within an existing contract.
Well, it would depend on how the contract is set up, but that is typically what I have seen. If, if they are going to offer call center services, then the software is typically provided by them.
One more question, because I don't wanna take the rest of our, our body's time. Regarding, and, and, and I know that the mayor is very active in responding to these inquiries, I have a lot of frustration from residents on water billing. And I think I brought this up to you all, and I, I, I'm looking forward to reading this more in detail. What are some of the issues that, I don't know if you reviewed specific comments, because some would say, "I think I'm out of cycle," or "my bill was double this month," and I checked, I know Mr. Welch has helped two of my residents, sorry for bothering you all the time, but a couple of my residents, they called, and he actually sent out folks to make sure they didn't have leaks in their home, but they were still very concerned, because their bill would double. So, and, and it seemed like there was no explanation. Did you look at any of those concerns that were expressed, and what ballpark, like, what is the main reason that that usually happens? I understand that residents don't always get it right, but it can't be that many residents that have expressed concerns. I know he lives down the street from me, not down the street, but in that same general area. We see a lot of emails come in, or, or a lot of phone calls come in about the, the billing itself.
So, what we looked at was the process of billing in compliance with the OMI contract. So, what we looked at is how our bills generated, the high-low report, what action is taken upon the high-low report, those miscellaneous adjustments fell into that. So, it was the process of billing, and, and they do validations on items that fall outside on the high-low report. But, the risk assessment that's coming up at the end of this year, you know, if billing turns out to be a high risk, I would say, would recommend a deep dive into data analytics, and looking at the data, looking at the reporting from the calls that come in, and tracing that and root causing it, more of a deep dive into, into that.
And I agree with you, but that's, that's for you, for folks like you all that know what you're doing. I do, I would like to see Mr. Dodge, if you're on, and I mentioned it to Mr. Bonilla, the website for the, the water utility, if, if we could take a look at that, because I know a lot of the confusion stems from cus, well, residents, I should say, who don't know how to maneuver it very well. I have a very, I have an elderly population in Century Village that may not work very well on computers. They've expressed some frustrations with that, and perhaps, it might, might actually be as simple as putting on the front of the webpage, if you have issues with water billing, or psych, or questions about the, the way that the cycle was calculated, whatever, call one specific number, maybe, instead of the broader customer service, because I, at least in my very short 13 months as a commissioner, period, that seems to be the number-one question that I receive. So, but I appreciate the work, thanks for answering my questions.
You're welcome, thank you.
Commissioners?
Mayor, thank you. Job well done.
Thank you.
From a historical perspective, the water bill was basically like the size of a postcard for years. And postage went up, card had to stay the same, then more information went on the card. And then even more information, then you turn it over, and there's more information on, on the back of that. For a period of years, the city has struggled with keeping up with trends. Some of it culturally, others maybe financially, but we're at the point now where I would be very concerned about having one call center for one vendor, another call center for another one. That, that's just, that's just not gonna work.
Sure.
For many years, to the city manager's credit, you know, we were known as, you know, second-largest city in Pembroke Pines with a small-town feel. Well, part of that was, when you dial City Hall, you don't get, press one, two, three, and four to get to somebody. It was always a live, it always has been a live person. I'm very proud of that. We're at the point now where that may not necessarily be the best way forward. So, some of the data collection that you saw is just literally culturally the city of Pembroke Pines, and that's just the way it's been done. So, I would, I would encourage city administration to explore. The best option for us, without going into that high-profile, sterile environment, if you were to call a large county, you get, you know, you, you get to run around, that sort of thing. Or, God forbid, you call the cable company, they'll never answer. But, overall, I, the, in the short period of time that you worked on this, tremendous effort. About six weeks, I think, you came to us in beginning of May?
Yes, we started it and completed it in four and a half weeks.
Four and a half weeks. Less time than, that was less time than we actually advertised a police and fire pension that was six weeks long. You guys got this comprehensive report in four weeks. I wanna congratulate you on that. City manager, I think we, this should probably be workshopped, as far as if the city commission feels it should be the, a direction that we should take citywide, building department, press one, yada, 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 if that's the direction that we wanna go. Generally speaking, our website is no longer a landing page, it's a minefield, and we need to, we need to simplify one number for City Hall in order to get to certain, certain things. I, I think there's, we're, we're here now in, in a, in a new century, in a new decade, and, and we have to, we have to move forward, despite, I know it's gonna be difficult for some, we've been here for a while, but we need to move forward. But, again, to our commission auditor, thank you, thank you, thank you for this comprehensive report.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes, I wanna say thank you for the quality of the report as well. And my question is more for the city manager. Obviously, you guys gave the report, I believe, Monday, was it?
Yes.
Monday, and the contract we have for OMI slash Jacobs is, is in the agenda already, and it was published before that. Based on these recommendations, was part of that contract moved, was that already pre-assumed and changed into the contract? Or, or is there space for us to implement these suggestions into the contract as well?
Yes, some, yeah, some of those comments that were made have already been incorporated within the contract.
I saw the KPI's, or?
Yes, but the call center software, we are actually working on, that's not in the contract, but it's something that we agreed to with our management responses, and we're addressing all of those.
Okay. And particularly to the customer service, I know we're gonna have a discussion later on about communications in our city, and, and just to highlight that this is a really prime example as to how our residents see what the city does, how their taxpayer funds are being spent, and if they have an issue with billing, with water, with utilities, whatever it may be, it should be easy enough for them to fix it. And so, that part of the communication, like, this is your tax dollars at work, stealing a, a line from what we're gonna be seeing a little bit later, but having a customer service line, or having that data, is gonna be really, really helpful for us to address those issues, because I don't want any resident to feel as though it is cumbersome to either get their money back on, on something, to have a conversation about something as essential as, as water and our utilities, and, and bringing forward that customer service angle, because we are a very large and growing city. I think that's really important, because it just, it, it's the front-facing world into our residents. It's the first thing that they see, and a lot of them don't know that they can reach out to us. A lot of them do, because we do get the phone calls, and we get the emails, but some people don't know that there is a commission that they can particularly reach out to or have on speed dial to, to help with these questions and these scenarios. And sometimes, even before I got onto the commission, my mom has a lot of issues on the computer with the utility bill and things like that. And that's something that we can ease with help of the, the vendor that we have for this, but I think it, it's part of a larger conversation as well, the customer service, the, the community impact, the communication that we have, and how front-facing we are to, to our residents. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Seeing how everybody said something, I just drew a little piece. I, I will say that I'm, I'm satisfied with the report that you provided here. I think it's exactly the things that, what I see your services is, you know, discovering areas where, you know, we can start making improvements, you know, be proactive, and, you know, this certainly gives us the ability to deliver to our customers better services. And so, great baseline, and I'm looking forward to what more you were able to discover for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I also wanna add that, I should, probably should've said this in the first place. So, you know, I, I, I get a lot of these concerns about water bills, and I dive into them with, with, with the staff, and it's interesting. I had this one guy, and he said, "I wanna know why I was billed twice this month for the same amount, for the same, why was I billed twice?" "Because I show a credit, you know, so you charged me twice for the same month, and I want you to tell me why." And it was Tim that said, "Because you and your wife both paid the bill." How do you fix that? If you're in the city, I'm not sure you can. Another one said, "I usually only pay somewhere between 3,000 and 4,000 gallons worth of water every month, but now it was 10,000 gallons. How could that be? It, it has to be a misread." But, no, they, and they're not a, I'm not sure that's even in their contract, but they send people in trucks to turn off the thing, to see if, if, if something's spinning, and they had leaks in their house, either in the faucets, either in one of their hose bibs was left partially on, or they had a toilet bowl leak. And you can lose thousands of gallons. If your, if your, if your toilet is running, you're losing thousands of gallons a month, and you don't even realize it, one trickle at a time. Then, there's the situation where there's a misread. And where there's a misread, they give them a credit. I mean, it's no questions asked, they just give them a credit. And very often, they use, because they've developed it over time, they look at the accounts and how much water a particular home is using, and they sort of almost use that as a pre-audit to decide which ones they're gonna triage. And very often, they find their own mistakes before the customer calls, and they make their own corrections. I'm sure you've seen this-
Yes.
-based, based on, on, on your own auditing. So, there is a great deal of effort, although there's some cynicism out there that all the water department wants to do is collect money. They're really not in the business of collecting money, though they do, they must. They're in the business of providing a service, and they're trying to do it as best they can, but sometimes, sometimes it's, 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 it's a situation that, that has to be explained. And getting somebody on the phone has been, has been an issue. And if we want to provide better service to our residents, we can do that, but then we have to pay for it. You know, we have to make sure that somebody's there to answer the phone. Or we have, or if we use an automated system, we have to make sure that there's somebody there who can answer it within a two, three-minute wait time. And all of those things have price points. So, let's, let's remember that when we do these contracts, that it's important to have these things, and if we can find a way to reduce that cost intelligently, we should, obviously, but if we, if, if we want customer service, you have to be willing to pay for it. And that's, that's a major concern. I wanna thank you for your, for your presentation today.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next is, hold on one second. Announcements of committee appoint, appointments. I wanna, I wanna thank Norm Taylor again. I think he's, I think he's been a member of the Planning and Zoning Board for 18 years, and he did a tremendous job, and I wanna thank him. He's a personal friend of mine as well, and I, and I'm wishing him well now that he's stepped down. And I am appointing Heidi Jones as an alternate member of the Planning and Zoning Board to fill that vacancy created by the department, departure of alternate member, Norm Taylor. And this, this appointment will create a vacancy on the Board of Adjustment, which will be publicly advertised in accordance with the standard procedures. Next is a motion to appoint Lisa Stewart to fill the Real Estate Professional Member vacancy of the Affordable Housing Committee. This one requires a vote, Mr. City Attorney?
The answer on this one is yes.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Motion made.
Motion made by Commissioner Good. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by the Vice Mayor. Any discussion on this appointment? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Show passes unanimously, and Lisa Stewart is appointed to the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee. Thank you very much. The consent agenda today consists of items 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, 25, 26, 27, 28. Is there a quasi-item, Mr. City Attorney?
Mr. Mayor, if you will, numbers 29 and number 30, which are connected legally and operationally, are quasi, and I will give you the rules of the road when you get to those items.
So, do we include those, or do we handle those separately?
That's correct. They're not consent items.
I'm sorry?
They're not consent, that's correct.
So, it's items 1 through 28, and if you'll give me a, a second. What is your pleasure?
I'd like to pull number 5, please.
Number 5 for Commissioner Rodriguez. Okay, anyone else?
Number 1, Mr. Mayor.
Number 1 for Commissioner Good. Any el, anybody else? Hearing none. Any from the public? Okay. With the exceptions of item 1 and 5, 1 and 5 on the consent agenda, the rest are on the table. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion made by the Vice Mayor, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Rodriguez. Any discussion on those items? All but item 1 and 5. Any from the public? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Show passes unanimously. Commissioner Good, you're recognized on item 1.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, item number 1 is motion to approve the agreement with sole-source vendor Commercial Energy Specialist, CES, for the purchase and installation of the next-gen chlorine generator retrofit at the Academic Village Pool, an amount not to exceed 140,282 and 92 cents pursuant to- to exceed 140,282 and 92 cents pursuant to section 35.18, print C, print 3 of the City Code of Ordinance.
May I have a second, please?
Second.
Seconded by the Vice Mayor. Commissioner Good, you're recognized.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I I just wanted to get an explanation more along the lines of from procurement. I mean, I'm not in a oppose this item, and I just need to understand a little bit more about the procurement process here. So, I mean, this seems like it's a sort of a no-bid exemption, single sole source, but yet with a bit of a twist, and maybe maybe you can help me understand the twist piece.
Mr. Dodge?
So...
Yeah, Mr. Gomes will address that.
Good evening, everyone. Mark Gomes, procurement director. Yes, so typically when we have a sole source item, we, the department writes their justification on why it's a sole source. We normally get a sole source letter from the vendor, and during that process, we go out on our e-procurement platform where we put out our all our RFPs, IFBs, RFQs, and we issue something called a notice to sole source. That allows vendors to come forward and say, hey, yes, we have a product, this is not a true sole source, or they, no vendors come forward and we move forward with the sole source. So, we've done this in the past with various items that's been presented to the City Commission, and this is just another one of those items.
Okay. Is this the only time that we actually submit a no-bid type of procurement with a a notice to the public saying, do you object or anything?
This is not the first time. We've done this many times before.
But do you do it for things other than sole source?
Well, there's various exemptions in in our code. We have exemptions like emergency, we have exemptions like professional services, health services, and things like those. So, those typically won't have multiple bids.
Okay, so there is a process that if you do, if you do a no-bid, that you can actually put it out in the market world and ask for any objections to to the award of the of the contract or whatever.
Exactly.
Okay. All right, Mr. Mayor, I'm I'm fine. Thank you very much.
Anyone else on this item? Anyone from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Show passes unanimously. Commissioner Rodriguez, you're recognized, item 5.
Item 5, motion to approve the agreement between the City of Pembroke Pines and S. Katz, Inc., for medical director services for the Fire Rescue Department in the amount not to exceed the annual fee of $41,706.08.
Okay. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Seconded by the Vice Mayor. Go right ahead.
Just wanna premise it by, I apologize for not including this question in the Monday Night memo, and understandably, if the answer isn't available, but when is the last time that we bid this out? Was it the six years ago?
Mr. Dodge?
Or is this something that's not able to be bid out?
It was bid several years ago. The chief probably can give us the date when it was done, and this was the private prior medical director, chief.
Good evening. Marcel Rodriguez, Fire Chief. This was bid out six years ago. We went to a number of local medical directors, and Dr. Stephen Katz was the best option at the time and continues to be the best option for our fire department.
Other than it being the best option, do we have any other justifications as to why it didn't not go out to bid, but rather it is just an agreement that we're going into with this person again?
This, medical services such as this is an exemption for for that. That's an option, and that's the option that we exercise not to go out to bid.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the item?
While I have the chief here.
Yes.
Chief, good to see you this evening. The medical director process, my understanding, it's it's pretty stringent. There's only a, there's a small batch of folks who actually get approved. I remember when Chief Picorillo went through the process six years ago. Generally, some may say that medical director is like a Supreme Court appointment where they're there for a lifetime, but I know that I have confidence that you review on a on an annual basis, and you would come forward if changes needed to be made, correct?
Absolutely.
Thank you, sir.
Anything else? Anything from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Show passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Item 29, City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. Number 29 and 30 are mutually dependent, and if you will, I will give you the rules of the road once I read the titles into the record.
How do you wish to proceed? Do you wanna do them both at once, or do they require separate votes?
What I suggest to you is because the testimony and evidence which may be offered under the ordinance in place, I would apply to both. I would suggest reading both titles and allowing the public hearing to apply to both, separate votes on each, with your permission, Mayor.
Very good.
I'll read the titles and then give you the rules of the road under the code.
Go right ahead.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. 29, for the record, is a motion to pass proposed ordinance number 2025-06 on first reading. It is an ordinance of the City Pembroke Pines, Florida, amending chapter 155, the Land Development Code of the City Pembroke Pines by amending section 155.401 entitled zoning map to amend the city zoning district map to rezone an approximate 40-acre parcel of land located generally on south of Pines Boulevard and west to southwest 145th Avenue, as more particularly described in exhibit A. Rezoning the parcel from the current zoning of planned commercial development, that's referenced as PCD, to mixed-use development, referenced as MXD. Approve the allocation of 44 flexibility units, approve affordable housing residential density bonuses, and approve a restrictive covenant, as more particularly described in exhibit B attached here to, limiting rents for 44 units to moderate level in compliance with Broward County Policy Number 2.16 dash, pardon me, 2.16.3, as more particularly described in exhibit C. Providing for codification, providing for conflicts, providing for separability, and providing for an effective date. Number 30, which is connected to number 29, is as follows. A motion to pass proposed ordinance number 2025-07 on first reading, and for the record, is proposed ordinance number 2025-07 is an ordinance of the City Pembroke Pines, Florida, creating the Pembroke Gardens Mixed Use Development, that's MXD District Design Guidelines, for the approximate 40-acre parcel of land generally located south of Pines Boulevard and west to southwest 145th Avenue, as more particularly described in exhibits A and B, attached here to and incorporated herein. Providing for codification, providing for conflicts, providing for separability, and providing for an effective date.
Can I have a motion to move both items concurrently, please?
Motion.
Made by Commissioner Rodriguez. Can I have a second-
Second.
-concurrently?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. For the record, this is-
That's that's second was made by the Vice Mayor. Go right ahead.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. This is a quijudicial proceeding. It's governed by chapter 155 of the city's Land Development Code, and essentially provides as follows. This is a bit of a a specific procedure, as you have experienced in the past, and provides as follows. The purpose is to provide an equitable and efficient manner for the city to hear matters which are considered quijudicial in nature. These procedures shall be utilized by the Board of Adjustment, Planning and Zoning Board, and the City Commission in regards to hearings on quijudicial matters in which their body is the final authority. And this would apply both to this rezoning, which is before the commission, as well as the text amendment that's provided for it, item number 30. If you've had any ex parte communications with regard to the matter, you can disclose them during the course of the meeting on the record as to whether or not you've had any conversations with the applicant, the applicant's counsel, consultants, or others. Essentially, the process is straightforward, you've been down the road before collectively and personally. All persons testifying before the Board or the City Commission must be sworn in. The clerk will swear anyone who came this evening to testify for or against either item will be sworn as a matter of record, and perjury does apply for those who fail to tell the truth. The petitioner, members of the Board or Commission, City Commission, and any affected person who has provided notice that it intends to appear at the proceeding shall be given the opportunity to present evidence, bring forth witnesses, and cross-examine any witnesses. Next up under the code is, this is under chapter 155. All evidence relied upon by reasonably prudent persons in the conduct of their business shall be admissible, whether or not such evidence would be admissible in a court of law. However, immaterial or unduly repetitious evidence shall be excluded, and the mayor has certain prerogatives as the chair of this meeting to control that issue of introducing evidence and the like. Hearsay, hearsay evidence may be used for the purpose of supplementing or explaining other evidence, but it shall not be sufficient by itself to support a finding. Documentary evidence may be presented in the form of a copy or of the original, if available. Upon request, the parties will be given an opportunity to compare the copy with the original as needed. A party shall be entitled to conduct cross-examination when testimony is provided or documents are made a part of the record. The office of the city attorney actually acts acts as your counsel, and for that purpose, staff will be presenting independently and will be able to make their presentations accordingly. The provisions that I just read to you into the record, which are the rules of the road, is section 155.304 of the Land Development Code of the City Pembroke Pines. The proceeding shall be conducted in an informal manner. Each party shall have the right to do the following: to call and examine witnesses, to introduce exhibits, to cross-examine opposing witnesses or any relevant matter, and to rebut evidence. To the extent possible, the following shall be the order of proceedings. The proceedings will be called to order and announced at the beginning of the proceeding. A majority of the Board or the City Commission must be continuously present. As you know, if you have to go to the men's room or ladies' room, there are speakers in the back room, with all due respect, and you will not lose any contact with the proceeding if you have to have a biological break, as they say. The matter to be heard and the rules concerning the admissibility of evidence should be announced, which I'm providing to you now. The statements of counsel shall only be considered as argument and not considered as testimony unless the lawyer involved is sworn and provides both testimony and argument. Counsel for party shall not be subject to cross-examination, except if they're called as a witness and they have been sworn as a witness. The Board or the City Commission shall have the authority to refuse to hear any testimony which is both irrelevant and or repetitive. The chair of the Board or the City Commission shall have the option of determining the order of presentation of the parties in order to expedite the proceeding. During its presentation, the city shall present any staff, board, or other reports in the matter. So, for example, when you begin the proceeding and the clerk swears in the witnesses, any, and I'll put this on the record further, which we're on the record now, any and all evidence, testimony, or documents, photos, et cetera, which were presented to the Planning and Zoning Board are legally before you this evening. You have seen them. They're made part of the record that was provided to you as the backup for tonight's presentation, and you'll hear more about that from Mike Stam, who'll be presenting both as an assistant city manager and the director of that department. The report shall include, but not be limited to, a description of the request of the petitioner, a description of the background and related petitioner, et cetera, or any analyses as well. The petitioner or a representative may make a presentation. We understand that Mr. Dickerson is present this evening on behalf of the applicant, which is applicable to both number 29 and to number 30. If the petitioner chooses to make a presentation, it should include a description of the nature of the petition, if there is additional information that has not been previously provided to or by the city. In addition, the petitioner shall introduce any exhibits and witnesses. Again, I'll restate for the record that anything that was provided to the Planning and Zoning Board is deemed to be before you legally and operationally, and may be considered by you and is supplemented by tonight's sworn testimony. The parties who are in support of the petition shall make their presentation. The parties shall introduce any exhibits and any witnesses. Parties who are in opposition of the petition shall make their presentation. The parties shall introduce any exhibits and witnesses. That includes both counsel for any of the, any objectors, if there are any, or any any member of the public who is an affected person who appeared this evening to speak against the projects as well. City personnel in attendance shall provide responses to any party to the proceeding. After each witness testifies or documents are made as a part of the record, a party shall be permitted to question the witnesses. The questioning party is not permitted to make any statements, only only ask questions, et cetera, which would be directly related to the item before them. Final presentation by petitioner in response to any testimony from other parties, final presentations by the city, and then the commission will actually deliberate in public. There's no private voting. This is a full deliberation, which will be in public. There'll be motions which are already asked for by the mayor. Each item will be considered separately on the record. And at the end, there'll be a, the the actual documents will be the evidence of the decision being made. To that extent, there are second readings required by state law under both items before the commission this evening, because both are ordinances. To that extent, Mayor and Commissioner, another issue just to consider, which you're aware of in your previous experience, is who's an affected person or affected parties. A person or persons natural or corporate who is a member of the City Commission, or who is the owner of the subject property, or who owns property within 500 feet of the subject property, as listed in the records of the county property praiser, are deemed to be affected parties. There may be people who live on the other side of town, who might have come this evening because they're interested in this particular applicant's request. They have a right to be heard as well, but they're not affected parties, so they have limited rights under the city code, under the Land Development Code. Only the affected parties, those who are within that certain radius, have the ability to actually ask questions of witnesses theoretically, and to that extent, they're deemed to be, under Florida law, called affected persons. A quijudicial proceeding, which again, I just gave you the present, the actual rules of the road, it's the application of a general rule or policy to specific individuals' interests or activities. This is a site-specific rezoning before you, and it's a specific change proposed to the MXD zoning zoning provision, a text amendment, which you'll hear more about from the city when it makes its presentation. The mayor has the gavel. The mayor has control of the meeting. The mayor also gets to regulate how the debates occur. We can try as best we can to avoid repetition and certainly avoid disruption, as the case may be as well. So, again, at this point, Mayor and Commissioner, having been given the rules of the road under the city's Code of Ordinances in the Land Development Regulations, it would be appropriate if the city clerk would swear in any member of the public or any witness who's gonna testify this evening. If you would kindly, through the mayor, rise and raise your right hand. Any member of the public that came out this evening to speak for or against-
Anybody who wants to speak on 29 or 30.
Raise your right hand, please. The clerk will now swear you in.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give shall be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
You all may be seated at this point, and under the rules of the road that were read to you earlier, and the commission, under the, under chapter 155, the city's professional staff will begin the presentation on behalf of the city's review and consideration of the applications, both of which are before the commission. Mr. Stam and others will be allowed to talk about both items at the same time, but both need to be considered separately by separate motion. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioner. If I can answer any questions of any sort, kind of description, I'm standing by to do so, or through the auspices of my law partner, Mr. Horowitz. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney, as always. Very comprehensive. We will begin with disclosures. This is quijudicial. I was contacted by the applicant and also by electronic mail by various parties. Maybe there were about 10 different emails. They're all on, they're all a matter of public record. I had no other conversations. Anyone else have a disclosure to make? Vice Mayor?
Contacted by city staff, the applicant, and tenants within Pembroke Gardens Mall and residents.
Anyone else?
I should say, I'm sorry, there were emails, so that they are also subject to public record.
Good.
I too was contacted by the applicant and the applicant representative.
Anyone else?
Mayor, the applicant's attorney, the applicant, members of the public, both via telephone, face-to-face, and email.
Anyone else?
I was contacted by the applicant and the applicant's representative via phone and in person, and by residents via email.
Anybody else? I think that's all of us, right? Okay.
Mayor, if I can, just quickly, just to make sure the record is clear on the subject, ex parte communications in land use matters are lawfully allowed. They're allowed by the code. They're allowed by state law, so long as you've disclosed, which you have-
That's right.
...the contents of which are privileged between you and the folks you spoke with, but they've been disclosed for the record. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Stam?
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. Mike Stam, Assistant City Manager and the Director of the Planning and Economic Development Department. Tonight, you have two items before you. You have a text amendment and a map amendment to the city zoning code. The first item is the map amendment. The applicant is requesting to change from planned commercial district to mixed-use district. This is to allow for residential construction within the shops of Pembroke Gardens. The MXD, this is the proposed district, allows both residential and commercial uses. Within the MXD, they're allocating 2.7 acres for residential construction. This application is consistent with the city's Land Development Code. It's consistent with the city's comprehensive plan. If you read through the agenda item, you can see there's clearly items that we have gone through. One item I need to make note of is that the Planning and Zoning Board had only three voting members the day this hearing occurred. The application technically failed 2 to 1. I need to make that clear, and it's in the agenda item that way. However, the P&amp;Z Board is only a recommending body when it comes to these applications. The City Commission, because this is an ordinance, two ordinances, has the final say in this application. The application is for residential use. They wanna propose 308 multifamily units. Those multifamily units include 44 moderately affordable multifamily units. The applicant is using a program that's part of the Broward County Rules that allows the application of flex units, which the city's controls, at a ratio of 6 to 1 to get the number of units they're proposing. There'll be subsequent applications in the future, site plan application, which will come before the commission, as well as a platnot amendment. Those items will come at a later date. As I mentioned, the first item is the map amendment. We're changing the map from PCD, planned commercial, to mixed-use. As an aside, it's important to note that when this project was built, we actually wanted mixed-use on this project. However, as you all know, this project is about 16, 17 years old, and if you remember, 16 or 17 years ago, we may have been coming out of a recession, and things were- and things were being built that way. So today, we have a 40-acre property that is proposing mixed use. This corridor, and part of our analysis, has to do with the corridor itself. The corridor has multifamily units at Altice, at Pembroke K., which is a condo and townhome community, at the Edison Project, which has already been approved by the Commission. It has office use for the Edison. It has the future medical use coming for Baptist. And it also has retail use. This is a true mixed-use corridor. We believe that this is consistent with the comp plan and how the City should be moving forward in the areas of development. The applicant has a presentation which he can present to you all. I appreciate you giving me some time. My speech is a little messed up today. Everything's good, though. I'm healthy. Just got a, you know, a little bout of Bell's palsy hit me last night. So, I appreciate everybody's humor, and I haven't messed up too many peas because they tell me the peas are the bad ones. So, Mr. Dickerson will do a presentation tonight, and I believe there's members of the public. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, should there be any questions for Mr. Stam from the Commission? You're permitted, through the mayor, to ask those questions, if not the applicant's counsel is present. Mr. Dickerson, you've been sworn both as counsel and as a witness. Is that not correct?
I will pause for questions when asked.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, if anyone has any questions, I will pause. Hearing none, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening. Dwayne Dickerson, on behalf of the applicant, Attorney with the Law for Miskell-Backman, offices at 14 Southeast 4th Street and Boca Raton. As a bit of housekeeping, I'd just like to state for the record that I would please like to present the evidence as part of your backup materials as exhibits tonight, both from the Planning and Zoning Board and all of the applications and supporting documents that have been submitted for City Commission this evening. Also, we did provide the City with the PowerPoint presentation I'm about to go through, and I would like to present that as an exhibit for this hearing this evening. I'm happy to waive quasi-judicial proceeding, moving forward in the essence of time and move as expeditionally as possible through this hearing tonight.
Mr. Mayor, a couple of options, if you will.
Yep.
Thank you. The applicant's counsel, who both is testifying as a witness and also is acting as counsel on behalf of the applicant, is asked to waive the quasi-judicial proceedings. There are folks who appeared this evening who may be objectors, and therefore the consent would not apply. However, it can be requested by the applicant. The other item which can be considered by the mayor, and without objection from the Commission, Mr. Dickerson is offering into evidence any and all items that were offered and presented to the Planning and Zoning Board.
Yes, sir.
And to the extent that you're about to present what appears to be a PowerPoint, yes?
Yes, sir.
That you're seeking that the half of the mayor will accept that on behalf of the Commission as evidence on behalf of the applicant's request for item number 29 and number 30, correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Without your objection, Mayor.
Those of you who are sworn to speak, do any of you oppose the project? Please show me hands. Okay, thank you very much.
So, the subject property is shown here in the red boundary. It's on the southwest corner of Pines Boulevard and 145th Avenue, just east of I-75. The land use is currently commercial, and existing zoning, as Mr. Stam stated, is planned commercial development or PCD. We are proposing a rezoning to the MXD zoning district, which is the City's mixed-use development district. The subject site that you can see in the red boundary is just under 41 acres in total size. It makes up two parcels, the major parcel on the top and then the small, what I call the pizza, the pizza slice parcel, just below that. But that total is just under 41 acres. This is zooming a bit, as I'm sure most of you are aware. The site is currently developed with the shops of Pembroke Gardens Shopping Center, which is approximately 389,000 square feet of commercial, retail, and restaurant use. So, the specific request this evening of the -- is to rezone the entire plus or minus 41 acres, but then that will allow for the redevelopment of approximately 2.7 of that total acreage for a -- which is currently an underutilized parking area of the shopping center, and we're requesting to repurpose that with a multifamily residential development district consisting of 308 dwelling units. So, to accomplish that, we have several applications. This application is the rezoning, but as Mr. Stam stated, it has two parts. One is the map amendment of the rezoning to go from PCD to MXD, and the other is the text amendment or amending the language of the code to allow for the MXD guidelines that we are presenting this evening. We're also, as part of this process, requesting the allocation of 44 flex units, which I'll discuss in detail later, and the utilization of the Broward Next County Policy, which is 2.16.3. As part of that policy, it's an affordable housing policy, and a portion of this development will have affordable housing units, so we have to have a declaration of restrictive covenants that will restrict those units to be affordable for 30 years. And then also, we've worked with your staff and your team to proffer voluntary commitments with respect to financial commitments to affordable housing in addition to what we're building, as well as financial commitments to future traffic improvements in the quarter. So, this is a list of all of the applications that are part of our project. Now, the ones with the green check mark are the applications that are before you this evening, the map amendment for the rezoning, the text amendment for the rezoning, the allocation of the flex units, the declaration of restrictive covenants to maintain the units as affordable, and the voluntary commitments that I just discussed. There are two other applications that are processing through your City now. One is the site plan for the residential development, and the other is the platnot amendment to change the restrictive note on the property from commercial-only to commercial and residential, to allow for the 308 residential units. So, the last two that don't have the check mark, they're not before you tonight, but I just wanted to give you a comprehensive picture of the title, the total application package. Now, because we are requesting to go to a planned development, usually site plans are final at Planning and Zoning Board. But because it's a mixed development, the Planning Development Board, or Planning and Zoning Board, rather, is just a recommending body. So, you will also hear the site plan at a later date, and we'll get into the specifics of the site plan. But this evening, we're just before you for the rezoning. So, a couple of things Mr. Stam discussed, but with respect to your decision this evening, you mainly look at two things. One is the zoning compatibility of the surrounding uses, and then also compatibility with your comprehensive plan and your future land use element. You can see here the properties designated with the blue arrow. The current develop -- the current zoning of our parcel is PCD, and I just wanted you to -- this color map, I think, is very user-friendly to see the abundance of uses that Mr. Stam talked about around this property. So, for example, on the north side is PUD, which stands for Plan Unit Development, which is also a planned district. To the south is PCD, Planned Commercial District, like we're zoned, MXD, which is what we're asking to be zoned to, and B2, one of your commercial districts. To the east or to the right side, you have PDSL, which is Planned Development Small Lot. You have Agricultural, which is the A. The B2 and the B3 are both commercial zoning districts, and then the RMF is your residential multifamily district. And so, and then to the west or to the left is PUD, Agricultural and Commercial. So, as you can see, this corridor has a ton of different zoning districts, a ton of different uses, and so for us to be requesting a mixed use with a mixture of uses is directly in line with what was intended for this corridor, I believe intended for this parcel and intended for this area as a whole. So, I think we squarely satisfy the compatibility component of the zoning and adjacent uses, as you can see by the colors in this map. Also, with respect to your comprehensive plan, staff also noted that we 100% are consistent with the requirements of your comprehensive plan. But I just want to give you an example. One of the future land use element policies is Policy 1.5 in your comprehensive plan, and it states, "The City should strive to continue to structure higher density near major arterials and open spaces." I don't think there are any arterials that are more major in your city than I-75 and Pines Boulevard, which are two directly adjacent arterials. So, your staff report and our backup materials clearly go through those requirements, but that's just a prime example that we satisfy not only the zoning, but also your comprehensive plan compatibility requirements. This shows you, and so on top is west, and that's I-75. To the right is north, and that's Pines Boulevard. On the bottom or to the east is 145th Avenue. And so, you guys, just so you orient yourself, the area which is the southeast corner of the shopping center is where we're proposing to have the residential development. So, you can see there where the red arrow points to the specific development site for the residential, and that will include the residential component as well as a parking garage component. You know, we're -- I want to be respectful to the rules and the requirements, so I'm not going to get into the site plan this evening or the specifics of the site plan, but just know that you will see that very shortly, and you will have the opportunity to ask questions specifically about the site plan and then deliberate based on those, that presentation. So, with respect to the flex units that we're asking for, Broward County allocates a pool of flex units to each municipality, right? And these flex units are used to allow residential development on parcels with an underlying future land use designation of commercial without requiring the project to go through a land use plan amendment to change the future land use from commercial to residential. So, this is not only policies that are implemented by the City, but also the county, which allow for this process and the allocation of flex units. Also, the flex units provide applicants with the ability to develop mixed-use projects. So, you have the commercial underlying components of a project, and you can put on top of that or flex on top of that commercial, these units that are allocated to the City to allow for the mixture of uses. And then also, and so that's how we're able to accomplish the goal of the residential with the commercial underlying land use, to get to the 308 residential units that we're proposing and maintain our commercial underlying land use. Now, with respect to that Broward County policy that I talked about, this is a policy and is 2.16.3 that allows the allocation of flex units and bonus density projects that include affordable housing. Now, this is something that the county is pushing, and I know the City is very adamant about it. I think it came up a little bit earlier about affordable housing opportunities, where you can build a bonus pool of units and therefore allow for residential development on a commercial land use or commercial zone property. So, we are requesting moderate income-level units, which is 120% of the median annual income of the county, right? And these moderate units allow for, for every one affordable, moderate-level unit that we build, we get six bonus market rate units. So, in doing that math there, that's why if we're doing 44 moderate-level affordable units, then I can have 264 market rate units, and that gets me to my total of 308 dwelling units and maintaining, once again, that commercial underlying land use. Now, as we stated, those 44 moderate-level affordable units have to be deed restricted for a period of 30 years, and the proposed deed restriction is part of the backup in this agenda item this evening. I wanted to briefly touch on parking because we are creating those MXD guidelines. Parking is one of the guidelines that we've set. So, we're setting the ratio of what the requirement of parking is, not only for the commercial portions of the development, but also for the residential. So, the commercial ratio is being set at 4.25 parking spaces per thousand. So, if you do that math, at the 389,313 square feet of building area divided by 1,000, and then you multiply that by the 4.25 per thousand, that would require 1,655 spaces, okay? And then, for the outdoor dining, we ran that at the 23,000 square feet of outdoor dining, which is a little more than we have now, but being conservative, we want to make sure we provided an opportunity for growth and still looked at the worst-case scenario that we could park this development safely and appropriately. So, with that, the 23,000 square feet of outdoor dining divided by the 1,000 and multiplied by the 4.25 is another 98 spaces. So, with those ratios, we would require, we would be required to have 1,753 parking spaces. We have a total of 1,755 surface parking spaces. So, we exceed the total number that would be required by code for commercial. On the residential side, we're proposing a ratio of 1.75 spaces per unit, okay? And with 308 units at the 1.75, that would be 539 spaces. We are proposing a parking garage that would accommodate those 539 spaces. And out in abundance of caution and to make sure that we are being conservative when we do not have a parking issue, we've included an additional 72 spaces on the ground floor of the parking garage. So, as you know, a lot of modern parking garages, you'll have the ground floor, and then when you get to a certain point, there'll be a gate, and anything behind that gate will be the 539 spaces for the residential component of the development. And outside of the gate, there'll be 72 surplus parking spaces on top of the 1,755 surface spaces that we have. So, we believe that we more than exceed any parking requirements for this, both of these developments together. And then, we just talked about, as part of the MXD guidelines, as part of a planned development, where you're essentially writing the code to satisfy the development that you're proposing, that is part of your backup, the MXD guidelines to permit the mixed use, and that provides the development standards for the project, including setbacks, building heights, lot coverage, parking, et cetera, landscaping standards, and then setting architectural design standards. As you're aware, shops Pembroke Gardens has been around, like Mr. Stam said now, for about 18 years or so, and they have some very specific design guidelines with their tenants. So, we've married that into what we're proposing this evening to make sure that the shopping center and the residential components keep the very high quality that you've been used to over the last almost two decades. And then, very briefly, wanted to touch on economic impacts of a development of this nature. Currently, shops Pembroke Gardens employs over 200 folks, over two, I'm sorry, 200, over 2,000 jobs that are provided with our restaurants and our retailers. And in addition to the over 2,000 jobs, there's another 1,000 jobs of flow-through jobs like vendors and contractors and suppliers, et cetera, that service the shopping center on a daily basis. With the residential component of the redevelopment, we're anticipating over another 300-plus jobs, which will be created as part of the construction project. And if you look at that math, that's anticipated to produce over 31,000 or 31 million, over $31 million in wages to employees for the two-year period of the construction for the project. So, I think you would agree that's a significant impact. And last year, shops Pembroke Gardens paid over $3 million in ad valorem taxes and special assessments to the City. Of that, I think the City got over $900,000 in ad valorem taxes, and then there was a fire assessment, I think, over north of $250,000 that went to the City, and then I think there was another $50,000 or so in debt service that went to the City. So, as you can see, we're producing a significant amount of tax revenue and job creation in the city of Pembroke Pines. And just really quickly, with respect to sustainability of a building like this, we are proposing that this building be LEED certified, okay? We are also increasing open space. Like I said, this is an underutilized surface parking lot. So, while we're putting a building, we're still able to pick up additional open space area and decreasing the amount of impervious area because we're using an underutilized surface parking lot to accommodate this development, which of course helps us increase our stormwater retention and components of the shopping center. Also, you know, this redevelopment project doesn't require greenfield development, which also furthers our stormwater retention, and what that means is, you know, usually you're looking for vacant land that's already impervious area, and then we're turning it into impervious area. That's not the case here. So, we are not required to impact any of the greenfield areas and actually adding to them. And then, we are looking to include a recycling program in the building, which has the dual chutes for trash and recycling, which are provided in our building. So, you'll have one chute for the recycled materials and one chute for the trash materials. I know the City's always looking for opportunities for recycling, and when the City in the future hopefully brings that online, this building will already be pre-built to accommodate that. So, we think that's a really, really cool component. And then, lastly, you know, the new craze is the EV charging stations. We are, we are We are, we are looking, while, as we know, the state has preempted the cities, we still think being a good corporate citizen is including these EV stations into our development. So that is a, a portion of this development as well. So with that, I'll, I'll take a pause. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. And, and just for the record, I would like to reserve a few moments to address any comments or concerns that are raised, um, and as the hearing moves forward.
Commissioner, my plan was to allow the public to speak and then, and then ask questions once all testimony is in. However, if you, if any of you has a pressing question that can't wait, otherwise, uh, I want to thank you.
Yes, sir.
And I want to bring up, uh, the public. So the first, uh, uh, person that signed up to speak was Ken Rivera. And as Ken makes it to the podium, let me explain how this is going to work. So I'm going to give each of you three minutes. You don't have to use three minutes. You can use two, you can use one. You can't use four. Now, uh, if, if you're about to say something that's already been said, you don't need to say it. You can shorten your speech, you can sit down, you're not required to speak. If, if what you've heard before you is what you came up to say, you don't need to say it again. Um, so we're, we're, we're trying to make sure that we don't get repetitive, duplicative information. It's just not necessary. Uh, but that's up to you. Everyone will be given a chance to speak and I want to thank you. And we will begin with Ken, who will state his name and his address for the record.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, City Attorney. Uh, my name is Ken Rivera and with Waste Pro located at one seven-three zero-two Pines Boulevard here in Pembroke Pines. While I do represent the city solid waste service provider, that's not why I'm here tonight. I'm here because it matters to be a partner with a city that is forward-thinking, especially when it comes to housing. The Pembroke Gardens residential project reflects the kind of development that plans not just for growth, but for the people who make that growth possible. As community, communities expand, so does the need to ensure that essential workers, including our, your Pembroke Pine drivers, can afford to live where they work. That's what makes this project meaningful. We support the efforts that align with the economic development and the housing accessibility and I'm thankful for the opportunity to show and share our support this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker will be Salvatore Russo.
May I just a quick question if I can for Mr. Rivera? Can you have been sworn, correct?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening, Mayor.
Your name and address for the record, please.
Salvatore Russo, address is nine twenty-four. Southwest one hundred and forty-three Terrace.
Yes, sir.
From what I've heard in, in the previous meeting, um, it's important that I put my little thoughts and deliver the fact that, um, in my opinion, this is going to affect, um, thousands of current residents in the city of Pembroke Pines. Even though it sounds good on paper, in my opinion, over three hundred, uh, units, that's going to affect, uh, the living current residents in the city of Pembroke Pines. That's it.
Thank you very, very much for your testimony. The next speaker will be.
And to confirm, Mr. Mayor, the speaker was also sworn, Mr. Russo, you've been sworn, correct?
Yes, I'm, I'm doing that visually, Mr. City Attorney.
Want to make sure the record reflects it, Mayor.
Yes, sir. The next speaker is Grimwald Lada Land Dieta. I'm sorry, I'm trying to read your beautiful handwriting and, um, and it is. But I wasn't wearing my glasses. Now I see it much more clearly. No, 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 you go right ahead. Your name, your name and address for the record, please.
Hemisolandaeta, um, nine seven eight Southwest one forty-third Avenue, Pembroke Pines.
Welcome.
So, would you be, um, it's concerned about the traffic impact. So has a traffic impact study been done for this ordinance? So adding three hundred new, uh, units, uh, will increase the traffic significantly. So I want, I want to know if they conducted any, any search or any study, how will be impacted the, the area? Because we only have two, two ways. That, that is my intervention.
Thank you very much. That'll be, that'll be addressed, uh, during today's hearing. Thank you very much for your testimony. The next speaker will be Mendoza. Mariela. Mariela Mendoza. Is Mariela Mendoza here? Okay. Marianella, do you want to speak? Your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, I not prepared nothing, but, eh, my name is Marianella Mendoza. I live one four-three forty-three Southwest ten Street Pembroke Pine.
Okay.
Um, nice building, but the, my problem is, is family resident. Um, the traffic is for the problem is only use one forty-five avenue. Only this, this is only my observation.
Thank you very, very much. Muchisimas gracias. Okay, the next speaker, it will be David, uh, Briet. Briar. David B. David B. Okay. Pedro Martinez. Your name and address for the record.
Pedro Martinez, uh, one forty-three seventy-two Southwest eleven-three Pembroke Pine.
Bienvenido.
Um, thank you. Is, uh, we got the meeting before. I hear the comment with the three hundred A unit. But what happened, you see on the blueprint, uh, the general, he, he present before, is, uh, he's taken out one hundred fourteen parking to the Pembroke K, uh, Chalk Garden. Everybody go to the shopping. Do you know he's full, everything is full over there, the traffic, only you got one way is the forty-five. What happened? The section where we live, do you know, when you go across where I working, I need go across to the street, one building in the front, the people he's go to take it in ninety-five. You got in the morning, every morning, you got the bus over there with the kids over there, everybody. Imagine it three hundreds eight people more. When suppose he give you the parking, he's take it out one forty-four. Suppose he's give you seventy-two, but the seventy-two is part to the, to the shop and Pembroke Garden and the other people he leave where he got only one point seven parking, you know? That one he's don't make sense, it's minimum you got one or two people leave over there. Imagine it easy, three hundred eight car, he's try to go in the same way when the people he live in Pembroke, in Pembroke K, he's go to the other way. That one he go to be a traffic, a nightmare. I know maybe complain is we go to do the building, you know, everybody he want to leave over there, it's beautiful. But the way how you got, only one way over there, you can go to ninety-five or you can go to the shopping in the same line. That one he go to be a nightmare, a nightmare. Uh, por that is I appreciate you thinking how we can fix it a problem or you're thinking in the future how we can fix it.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Able Coil. Thank you, sir. Juan Pinzon. Your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, my name is Juan Pinzon, ten forty-two Southwest one hundred and forty-third Avenue Pembroke Pines.
Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and everyone on, uh, the board. Uh, my main concern is, um, we are one of the communities that is right across from the project. Uh, the main thing that we have knowing that this project is coming up, it's traffic concerns, uh, over population. And with that in mind, uh, I was trying to dig a little bit more information on why our community was not notify, uh, properly about this project, aside from posted notices, but actually mail. Uh, in that process, I was able to connect with Mr., uh, Stan, sorry. Uh, and Stan gave me very, very valuable information in regards of what we as a community needed to do, to do to make sure that we get information on the, uh, on the do-matter time for things like this. Uh, on that corridor, as they express, uh, they said, oh, these lands are very, uh, it's, it's a project that actually is going to benefit because this makes use on a lot of the land pieces. The issue is that you guys already approved a project for a hundred, over three hundred and fifty units on that same corridor, right? We haven't seen the, the impact of that project for traffic. Uh, then you're going to add this, then you're, you're setting a precedent for that corridor to actually be overpopulated and have traffic issues within the community. And with traffic, you're going to have, uh, uh, safety issues. That is my main concern that I'm bringing it up. One thing could be, yes, uh, they're using their parking spaces to build there. Uh, I'm a little bit confused about the parking information because on the previous meeting, which the committee, uh, did not, uh, provide a approval or a, forget the term, to, uh, benefit of, of that, is that they were going to take away parking to build that. Now this building is going to be a smaller footprint, which is going to be higher. That's a, a main concern for us when it comes to a traffic, when talking to Mr. Stan. There is no really a plan for, um, traffic improvement because the road is limited. There is no space to build on that. So, uh, if this project, as he said, was, first of all, uh, they provided eight hundred plus units and they brought it down to three hundred, it's because there's some issues there. So that is my main concern that you guys have in mind. And being in District Four, I know Mayor Castillo, Hernandez, uh, you guys are well aware about that district.
Yeah.
And how that issue entails. Uh, and then the last thing is if we are able to communicate better and understand it, uh, is something that we need to make sure that, uh, the community is okay with that project. Because it might not affect you personally, but for that, uh, area on that community, it's going to affect, uh, tremendously. You guys already understand how traffic at Pines and seventy-five is. Uh, it takes me an average this past two weeks fifteen minutes to get from the exit of Pines to my home. Something that in regular time, it's a five-minute drive. Now it's adding more time. According to Mr. Stan, before traffic was worse. Now it is better because the USPS, uh, service center that was before, you know, isn't there anymore. But now it's, but now it's going back to the same traffic patterns that we have. There is no issues, although the, uh, the, uh, the project is providing you guys with allocating money to traffic, uh, incentives. Uh, there is no really options, uh, that we see of how to get better parking, uh, get better traffic, uh, in that area. So it's going to create more issues on that.
Thank you.
There is many other things, but this is kind of like the, the basic, uh, time, uh, the basic topics that I want you guys to have in mind.
Thank you very much. I gave you a little bit more time because your, uh, your, your group was very cooperative and I want to thank you for, I want to thank everyone for the testimony.
Appreciate it.
Did anyone else have anyone that took an oath that has anything else to say?
Could I have just twenty more seconds?
Twenty more seconds?
Yes.
Go right ahead.
Okay. When talking to Mr. Stan, he said that he personally was there on rush hour in our community, checking how, uh, much traffic was coming out of the community. He ta, he, he told me that it was around twenty to twenty-five cars leaving the community. That to me was odd because I know how rush hour is in our community. And for the day that we had the meeting and for today, I checked and on rush hour, it was between sixteen to seventy-five vehicles leaving the community.
Thank you very much.
I just thought a little bit.
Thank you very much for your testimony. That will conclude public testimony on this. Mr., uh, Dickerson, if you wish to rebut anything that you've heard, I will give you five minutes. That's it.
I'll do it in two.
Okay.
So first of all, Dwayne Dickerson, once again for the record. I want to be very careful. I know traffic was discussed and, uh, I, I don't think it's, it's the appropriate forum or the appropriate application to discuss that. And I think that will be discussed in length during our site plan, uh, application before you. Uh, we will at that time have our traffic engineer testify and, and approach it. But one thing I did want to say about that, it was asked if a traffic study was performed. Yes, a traffic study was performed, a par, a parking study was performed. Both of those documents were presented to your staff. Your staff has an outside expert consultant that they use for traffic and that expert is, uh, is not objecting to and found no issues with the traffic analysis that our traffic engineer provided. So once again, that i- is part of the seminal package in the city, is part of the public record and will be discussed at length, uh, during the site plan approval process. Also, um, two notice came up. I just want to reiterate for the record that, uh, there are multiple notice, uh, points of notice that have gone out for this project. One, we did send an HOA notice to any registered HOAs with the city within five hundred feet of the property. Two, we did send, uh, mail notice to any residents or property owners within five hundred feet of the property. Three, uh, your staff does post in, uh, the newspaper notice of this item. And four, we post a sign on the property which notices, um, this, this item tonight in any application that we've had in the past and that we will have in the future. So, uh, it's our belief that notice was fully satisfied and we followed all the legal requirements. And lastly, Mr. Pinzon, um, noted about communication. I believe at the last meeting, I gave him my card. I will give him another card this evening. I would love the opportunity to, uh, continue to communicate with him and his association and to make sure that, uh, where possible, we work together and make sure that this is a successful project. So I just wanted to put on the record, I give you my word, that I will, if he's, if he's willing, I will, uh, reach out to him after this meeting, give him my information again and hopefully we can communicate and, and, and meet his communication request. So with that, I'm, I'm happy to answer any of the questions that you have.
Thank you very much. Uh, Commissioners, what's, uh, before us today is not a site plan. What's before us today is the rezoning. And, uh, if we allow the rezoning to go through, then it allows the project to take shape uh, and a site plan can come forward. Uh, um, if the answer is no today, they cannot move forward with a plan. If the answer is yes today, they can move forward with a plan. That doesn't mean that the answer will be yes tomorrow. It depends on the plan that they present. Uh, however, that's the way, that's the way the process sort of works. So I want to make it clear, just within our conversation and within their conversation, and what I just said is clear to you, Counselor, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, so I want to make sure that everyone understands what conversation we're having today. We're not approving three hundred and eight units, we're not approving anything. We're approving, we're approving the first step in the land use process, which is a rezoning. And from there, other planning can begin to take place. Vice Mayor, the District Commissioner, and the discussion will begin with you.
And, um, excuse me. I wanted to thank, uh, you as well, but first our city staff, our Assistant City Manager, Mike Stam. I've been speaking with him and meeting with him on this, uh, proposal, which to the mayor's point, we're not here to approve three hundred and eight units. Uh, we're here to approve a rezoning. And I wanted to make that abundantly clear. There's a process and I will say I've, I've worked in, in, uh, much larger government than this. Mr. Stam is a man of integrity and an excellent professional and we're following a process. I want to make that very clear. A process, uh, one of the individuals, uh, who spoke, I, I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name. Yes, initially there was a, there was discussion about over eight hundred units. Uh, Mr. Stam, uh, and his staff worked with Mr. Dickerson. Uh, and that is no longer what is being discussed. I, I do, too often, city employees are criticized. Uh, I, I, I think they, in, in this instance, uh, particularly Mr. Stam and his staff, they deserve credit. Uh, I am the District Commissioner, but I'm also a frequenter, maybe too much, of Pembroke Gardens. Um, I'm well aware of, uh, I, I spend a lot of money there, uh, Village Tavern especially, a wonderful restaurant. Um, and I'm there at the Barnes and Noble as well. So I, I appreciate the space, I am there weekly, I go through there. I understand that there have been traffic issues, uh, as, and that's why at the appropriate time, I do have a great deal of interest in the traffic plans. And we've discussed that, uh, Mr. Dickerson and I. Uh, but I rely on these types of projects, uh, which I sometimes call game changers on city staff. Um, I appreciate very much the discussion that there, they want to have better communication with residents. I appreciate very much the discussion that they want to have better communication with residents. I'm all for that. My day job is in communications. That's what I do for a living. So I can absolutely appreciate what each one of you who spoke said. And by the way, thank you for coming because government only gets better when residents come here and meet and discuss and put their comments on the record. So I actually want to commend you for coming out here. I know this is a Wednesday evening and you could be home or you could be working and you're here. So thank you for coming out. For this piece of it, I'm satisfied. This piece of the process, I'm very satisfied with what Mr. Dickerson has presented. And more importantly, with what our city staff has presented. I am in favor of this because of the information that has flowed to us. But I do ask a favor. Those folks back there need to speak with you all and make sure that the communication is there. I know the notices are there. I know that because we are legally obligated to provide the notices. But I would, I would love to see even clearer and communication amongst everyone. I will say, at the appropriate time, these, this site plan does fall within what Mr. Stam and Mr. Dodge had explained in the past to me of the vision for that corridor. And I believe that it is the kind of area that, the kind of project that we need to look at, not just here, but throughout the city, that could address many issues. Out west, we have mostly single-family homes. And I live in one of them. And you have home values out there that are incredibly high. There's an affordability crisis around Florida, but in particular, in South Florida. The inclusion of 44 flex units is something that's appreciated, Mr. Stam and Mr. Dickerson, at least by me. I can't speak for other members of the commission, but my general sense is that it is a positive impact to this project. Tonight, for this first reading, we have two readings.
Yes, sir.
So I want to make that also clear. There's a process. This is first reading. We do not meet in July. It comes back in August on one of those agendas. There's a second reading. My hope is that between now and then, Mr. Dickerson and his team will speak with all of you. And again, I know they have already, but, and will address a lot of those concerns. But I am tonight in favor of this first reading and in this first step. And I want to again thank all parties involved, whether you're here in favor of it or opposed to it. Most importantly, our city staff, thank you.
Commissioner, good.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a couple of questions that will help me with some clarity.
Yes, sir.
For me? So I'm going to just start off with the, with the one that's, you know, actually is, when you brought up the issue about deed restrictions. So you're going to have 44 units within 300-plus units and they're deed restricted. So I don't, I'm trying to understand the mechanics of that. If you're a deed restricted community, meaning that you're buying at an affordable rate in a building that has a whole bunch of market rates. And if I decide to sell later and I'm in the affordable unit, how? I don't know, I'm missing the mechanics of how you hold the affordability level without it somehow creeping up to a market rate.
Yes, sir. Sir Mayor, may I respond?
Please.
Thank you. So Commissioner, these are rental units. So we don't have the ownership component. They will be rental units and the county sets every year, they'll set the area median income. I think in 2024, it's about $89,100. And so they'll set that and then based on that and the level of affordability, they'll set the rates for what you can rent, the maximum you can rent those affordable units for in 30 years. So the good news is, we don't have the issue with selling and how do we manage that. These are rental units and we can maintain the 44 consistent with the declaration and the deed restrictions to not exceed the rates that are set by, they're actually set by the federal government, by HUD. And then they filter down to the state and then to Broward County.
Thank you for that.
Yes, sir.
The next question I have is, when you, there was a reference about a school bus pickup. So if, if this unit is on that property, where would the school bus pick up? On the property or in 145th?
So we're working with the school board. And so we haven't gotten that far yet. We're going to work through that as a site plan. So a couple of things we have to do with the school board. One, obviously, they'll set bus routes and all that stuff. And I think it's more so they dictate to us. I don't think that's a give and take. I think they dictate to us where those drop-off locations will be. Another thing that happens is you go through a school concurrency determination, right? So we have to submit our application to the school board and they'll look at the number of students that will be produced based on our bedroom mix and so forth. And then they will tell us how many students our development is intended to produce, elementary, middle, and high. And then they look at your capacity of schools around the area and confirm that we have the capacity. So that, that's a process that we'll go through as well to get us, it's called a SCAD letter. And we'll get that from the school board. Now, as you all know, and later tonight, you guys have one of the finer charter school programs. I don't think your public schools are going to be overcrowded. As a matter of fact, I'm sure they're rather upset as how well your charter system does because, you know, it makes it more difficult for them to get quality when your charter system is kicking butt like yours does. So with that being said, we don't anticipate any issues with capacity. But that's another major component. With the school bus drop-off, I've never seen where we have any say-so. I see where they dictate to us where that location has to be.
Okay. So my next question is, there is a concern about the loss of parking that's being, that happens because of this and there might not be enough parking. So can you explain that relationship to the owner? The parking, the commercial, and the residential?
Sure, sure. So with the parking, the good news is, a lot of times, I talk to you in theory, right? There's ITE, which is the Institute of Transportation Engineers. And we are using tools, some science, some art, to try to establish what the parking demand will be. And that's based on, you know, research and other things. ITE is one of the bigger ones, or ULI, Urban Land Institute, right? The good news with a situation like this is we have a functioning operating center. So we did the study. We know exactly what the parking demand is. We know exactly what the requirements are. We know exactly how many spaces we need. And that's how we were able to work into those ratios that we discussed. So having said that, right now, the shopping center has 2,145 existing parking spaces. So what the gentleman was saying was, once we put the new development on that surface area, we will be adding back the shopping, the commercial will have 1,755 spaces, as we talked about in the presentation, right? Plus the 72 overflow spaces. So that's 1,827. So if you say, okay, the existing parking right now is 2,145, and when we're finished and the building's built and the parking garage is built, we're going to have a total of 1,827. And you say, oh, well, you're losing 318 parking spaces. Well, the good news is, based on our analysis and looking at all the data and the real-time, real-world scenario, this shopping center is woefully overparked and it has significant surplus of parking. Now, if you look at the peak time, a lot of shopping centers have midday, you know? So if it's purely commercial, usually it's 12, 1:00, or 2:00 is the peak. For us, our peak is actually on a Friday at around 8:00 PM. And why is that? Well, you have the nightlife that this center provides with the restaurants and some of the other eating establishments and drinking establishments. So when you have the retail tapering off in the evening and then you have the nightlife ramping up in the restaurant, ours is a little later. The good news is, we all know when the peak time for parking and traffic is for residential. People leave first thing in the morning and they come back early evening. So totally non, we call it non-concurrent from a parking and a traffic standpoint. The uses that we have, the mixture of uses, don't use the same parking spaces at the same time and don't have the same traffic patterns at the same time. So it's really a perfect scenario when you're looking at a mixed-use opportunity to not have a mixture of uses that all need the same parking at the same time and all come and go at the same time. We've actually done just the opposite of that and made sure we have a non-concurrent scenario. So that, but, but that, so when you hear, oh, they're losing parking spaces, it's the number of surface spaces for the commercial that we have now versus what will be the number once we build the building. Still, all the data shows, real-world, real-time data, that we have more than enough parking now. And of course, we'll have more than enough parking when the development comes online.
So the follow-up question to that then is, you know, when the residential units will have visitors that probably will use the parking, is there going to be any competition between the owner of the commercial and the owner of the residential?
Well, that's a good question. And I would tell you, they're the same owner. And when I started and Ramsey Meiser, one of the representatives here on behalf of the owner, we were called in the principal's office in the C-suite, CEO, COO, CFO, and said, whatever you do, don't you dare interfere with the success in the operation of the existing commercial. So the good news is, this isn't two competing developers going to compete. It's the same owner, it's the same development team. And so we have been, it's been very clear that everything we do has to be in line with what is compatible with the existing shopping center and to make sure that they both function very successfully and efficiently. So we don't anticipate any issues with that.
Okay.
And I, one last question, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Sorry. So, and this may be for the director, yes.
I'm off the hot seat.
I know you'll want to answer it, but I'd like the staff to do. So the fact that this is an MXD and it's generating, you know, another type of traffic generation, does this lead towards more opportunities for mass transit on 145th? You know, recognizing that this is sort of, that corridor seems to be a bit of a TOD, a transportation-oriented corridor, but it's not designated as a transportation corridor. But it has a lot of, a lot of similarities. And I'm wondering if this is going to generate an opportunity for mass transit on that road.
Mike Stam, Assistant City Manager, Director of Planning and Economic Development. Commissioner, the policies in our comp plan push us towards adding density to these types of corridors for that exact purpose. If you look at the projects that we've approved along the corridor, we have a mixture of office, residential, commercial, different types of office. We have the new medical user. My hope is that we will be able to get this on, that plan, as these users come onboard. You know, the city is always built, we're very single-family orientated. But our density is usually along the Pines Boulevard corridor. This 145th corridor has tons of opportunity, even as you go into Miramar. We've got the FBI headquarters, we've got Broward College, Kaiser College, we have hotels. So by adding density to this corridor, staff firmly believes, and it's consistent with our comp plan, that these types of uses are fully supported. I also might need to add real quick, Mr. Dickerson talked about the parking ratio. Mass transit becomes part of that parking ratio when you start to think about what this can bring. We've asked Mr. Dickerson to put a pad in place as part of the site plan, which you'll see in the future.
A pad?
A pad for a future bus shelter along the corridor. Obviously, we need to get the county to sign off on that concept because they control that aspect of it. But it's something that we added for the site plan. You'll see that hopefully in September, provided we move forward. But when you look at those things, if you build it, they will come, kind of happens. We've seen that here with our own city center, which is an MXD. You, just last commission meeting, you guys approved the mobility dollars, right? Those mobility dollars are because we have density here that can support mass transit opportunities. Our shuttles already go into Pembroke Gardens. But our hope is that we'll actually get a line down 145th going into Miramar because Miramar also has a lot of those commercial uses that will be supported. So we really, we believe that adding density to this quarter is a good thing. When we recommended the Edison to you almost four years ago, that same thought process was there. We recommended Altice to you almost, well, shoot, that's eight years ago now. That same thought process is there and we keep pushing and striving for that. In fact, Altice helped us get shuttle into that corridor. So we firmly believe that those things line up and they're compatible.
So if, so if we do have the ability to get mass transit on that corridor, then we would expect that the traffic count would be reduced, is that correct?
That's my hope, long-term.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't necessarily have a question per se, but just, I've watched the Planning and Zoning Board meeting start to finish. And I appreciate the, the level of engagement at this hearing. There's a stark difference of preparedness. And I'm hopeful, Mayor, that we're able to get the Planning and Zoning Board meetings back to twice a month because the process appeared a little rushed and decisions had to be made, which is just unfair to the public at large. Tonight, many of the, actually, all of the things that were said at the Planning and Zoning Board were reiterated tonight. But one of the things, Vice Mayor, that, that I haven't heard yet tonight from, from anyone is, this is the largest affordable housing project west of 145th in the city, period. We have, we have struggled to get buy-in, even for like these small infill projects to get affordable housing. I am certainly, historically, have raised the question of traffic on 145th and the concerns of that. Every time there's a project on 145th, I raise that question. The, the site plan, when it comes to us, I will be one that will go through a fine-tooth comb. What I don't want to see, and what I don't want to see is the concerns that were raised by members of the public being able to get to and from their, 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 their home. I don't, I don't want to see, I don't want to see a back and forth of, well, we hope it works out. I don't want to hear that. I want to hear definitive answers from traffic. Okay? That being said, the economic driver of this area, what wasn't mentioned tonight, is the FDOT expansion of I-75 and Pines Boulevard and that whole network, which, Commissioner, good. I think they've, they've moved it down the line. It's delayed again, but maybe, maybe by the time this thing comes back to us, we'll have a better understanding of where FDOT is at with that entire interchange. It would be fantastic if the NPO can provide us a little bit of information about when that's expected so that we can tell the residents that are directly impacted, what steps are being taken so that we don't have gridlock. So I don't know if we're going to get all those answers between first reading and second reading. But I'm certainly asking a lot of questions when I see people in the public of what's it like living there, what's it like working there, what's it like shopping there? Okay, because it's one of my favorite places in the city to go with my family. So that's all I have. It's not a question, it's just a general comment and expectation of what I like to see at second reading. Thank you.
Mayor, can I comment real quickly?
Just hold on one second. Commissioner Rodriguez?
I want to kind of expand. I think we all hit kind of similar points, but I do want to thank the residents for coming in. It's sometimes we don't always see that, kind of the feedback in person unless we watch the committee meeting, the advisory board meetings. But so, thank you for coming in. I think one of the things that I did want to address is, to address is not only the question on, on traffic, I think instinctively, we all think, okay, 308 houses, that's 308 different cars, maybe double that because two of them have, two people live in, in, in that space. But what I do want to point out is a little bit that maybe all of us could use some education as to what the traffic pardons, patterns of a mixed-use development may be like, because it's very different than a single-family home. In a single-family home, you have to leave your home in car, in, in this area, for every single trip. In a mixed-use development such as this one, you don't have to leave your house for every single trip, because what you, well, you don't have to leave your house within a car. What you can do is walk downstairs and go across the street or within that same facility and go to the restaurants, go, hopefully, a grocery store or something along the lines, a little market, have fun times on Friday there, go dancing, whatever it may be. And so some of the, the aspects that we consider this traffic pattern within a single-family home is very different from what we see in mixed use. So that's why sometimes when you think of larger cities like Fort Lauderdale or even places in Miami, people have an increase in housing options in that area. However, the traffic does not necessarily increase because you have everything that you need within walking distance. And I understand some of the, the concerns come from the community across the street, but knowing in that, in that space, the traffic pardons are very different, and I hope that we can all get educated on that as well. One of the things that I did also want to point out is, I want to thank the developer and the, the applicant on this for going through this, going on this project through the city commission, because, through the city commission and through our staff, because there is something called the Live Local Act. They could have gone through a Live Local Act option, and instead of their working with the city and respecting our sovereignty and allowing this kind of affordable housing and this diversity in housing to come true without being, you know, superseded of, of the commission and being able to kind of hear that feedback from our community. And then I did want to point out as well, the voluntary commitments for affordable housing are really, really important to us, mostly because at least, I, I will say, I live in an apartment building. I live in one of the only apartment building options within my own district, and that is Bell Apartments all the way out west. Having this diversity in housing option helps not only young families like myself and young people who grew up in Pembroke Pines, but also the people that would, our seniors, that are maybe looking to downsize and maybe stay near their grandkids and stay near the place that they saw their kids grow up, but have a different option as to what housing looks like, because we have tended to build single-family homes and townhomes, which are great, but it's not suitable for everybody. And I, I do really like this project because it gives us that opportunity and because it gives maybe some of the people like myself that were living in their parents' home at the age of 25, the opportunity to move out, build a family of their own, and have that own space within the same community that they grew up in.
Okay. Thank you very much. The item has been moved concurrently and seconded, so we will be voting on the items separately, both 29 and 30. So all those in favor of item number 20, not?
I just got one thing to make sure the record's clear on, Mayor.
Yes.
As Mr. Dickerson mentioned, and also as Mr. Penzone mentioned, the Pembroke K HOA was not registered with the city. After my conversation with Mr. Penzone, I informed him how to get his HOAs registered with the city to be part of these conversations, and I know we had this conversation about finding ways to get our HOAs registered.
They have to be registered, it's the law.
It's our law. So I needed to make that very clear. The second thing I need to make very clear is that Mr. Dickerson recommend, references traffic study. Based on comments received from the public tonight, also during the P and Z hearing, I've asked him to expand the traffic study to look more into the corridor. So I just wanted to make that abundantly clear on the record, so that the commission can understand as they're making this vote. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much for that. Okay. All those in favor of item number 29, please indicate by saying aye on first reading.
Aye.
Any opposed? Show that passes unanimously. Item 30, all those in favor say aye. Any, any opposed? Show that passes unanimously, and that ends items number 29 and 30.
Mr. Mayor, just for the record, Mr. Mayor.
Sorry?
Second and final reading on both, although referenced only as number 30 being heard on August the 6th. I'm assuming Mr. Stam is scheduled for both on the 6th of August in these chambers as a matter of public record and public notification, both item number 29 and 30, second and final public hearing in these chambers on the 6th of August.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Commissioners, as you know, we have an extraordinarily long agenda today. I have two requests from the public to move it forward, one, one from our charter schools who have to get to work very early in the morning, and the other, an item of interest for Rabbi Andrusier. So I'm going to take item 33 out of order and see if we can't get our good friends back to work. City Attorney, if you could read item 33, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. Number 33 is a motion to adopt proposed resolution number 2025 R-18, which is a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Pembroke Pines, Florida, formally approving a decorations policy for displays on city property, authorizing the city manager to administer and enforce the decorations policy, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. Number 33 on the floor, Mayor.
Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Moved by the Vice Mayor. Is there a second?
Second.
It's seconded by Commissioner Rodriguez. Any discussion?
Quickly, Mayor. City Attorney, is this policy driven based on the, on the court legislation? Because I believe it was 2015 to 2017 range. It was actually, we were at the old building. No, we were here, we were here. The decorations and stuff like that, and I, and I do recall you had provided a legal memo. Is this resolution basically codifying the legal memo that you had provided a few years ago?
Yes.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. To Commissioner, yes, if you look in the backup, we have our memorandum in, in the backup, which, to which you're referring. It is a supplement to previously given memorandum with regard to the subject, which has been changing over the past number of years to some degree. It is both current and consistent with Supreme Court decisions. It also provides the commission with the legal flexibility and constitutional protections that were otherwise provided in those court decisions. This policy, if, if embraced by the commission by the resolution, will be consistent as you asked.
Yeah, so it kind of goes along with, Mayor, what I'm seeking on the last item, which was legal review. They see it as an opportunity to kind of stiffen it up a little bit, make it better. I'm happy to support the item.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion? Any from the public? All those in favor say aye? Any opposed? Show that passes unanimously.
The rec. Mayor and Commissioner, permit number for number 33 is number 3907.
Correct. What is the charter school item? 35? 35 and 36. We're going to do those, we're going to do those in order. Item number 35, City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. 35 is a motion to adopt proposed resolution number 2025 R-20, which is a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Pembroke Pines, Florida, adopting the budget for the Pembroke Pines slash Florida State University Charter Elementary School for the charter school fiscal year beginning July 1, 2025, in the amount of $11,165,549, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. Item number 35 on the floor.
Moved by Commissioner Good, seconded by the Vice Mayor. Any discussion on this item? Any from the public? All those in favor say aye? Any opposed? Show that passes unanimously.
The rec. Mayor and Commissioner, permit number on 35 is number 3908, 3908.
Item 36, please.
36, Mayor and Commissioner, on the, on the floor for consideration. Motion to adopt proposed resolution number 2025 R-21, which is a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Pembroke Pines, Florida, adopting the budget for the City of Pembroke Pines Charter Schools, sponsored by the School Board of Broward County, Florida, for the charter school fiscal year beginning July 1, 2025, the amount of $75,589,007 flat, providing for conflicts, severability, providing for an effective date. Number 36 on the floor for consideration. Thank you, Mayor.
Two motions. Moved by Commissioner Good, seconded by the Vice Mayor. Any discussion?
Yes, I just have a quick question regarding on Exhibit 4, page 170 dash E, or dash 6. There is, for the expenditures, intensive English slash ESOL, and there is amounts for only the West Campus. Can I just get clarity as to why we don't have ESOL funding for East and Central?
Mr. Bonilla.
Exhibit 4, 170, 170 dash 6 at the bottom. They, they don't have page numbers on the exhibit.
Good evening, Jonathan Bonilla, Assistant City Manager, Assistant Superintendent. The reason for that is that we were specifically told by the principal at the West Campus that they wanted to denote those amounts within their budget, and that's a request that we allow, but the other campuses fund these through their regular 5101 and 5102, which is their regular K through 5 instruction.
Okay, so, but in the case that we do have students above the, the K through 5 segment, would those students be eligible for ESOL programs?
100%.
Okay.
And the funding is there.
Right now, we don't.
Allocation in regards to it, yes.
Understood. Thank you for the clarification. I appreciate it.
Anything else? Any from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye? Any opposed? Show passes unanimously.
The rec. Mayor and Commissioner, that's number 3909 for the record, 3909. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your cooperation. Going back to the agenda, we are now on item 31. The City Attorney, 31.
Getting there. Hold on. Promise.
Correct?
Thank you, Mayor. You are correct. 31, motion to adopt proposed resolution number 2025 R-13, which for the record is a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Pembroke Pines, Florida, approving the agreement with Operations Management International, INC., for the operation, maintenance, and management of the city utility system and services, making specific findings that the approval of this agreement is in the best interest of the city of Pembroke Pines pursuant to section 35.18, subsection C8 of the city's Code of Ordinances, authorizing the appropriate city officials to execute the necessary documents to effectuate this resolution, providing for conflicts, severability, and providing for an effective date. The rec. Mayor and Commissioner, number 31 on the floor for consideration.
Is there a motion for the item? Is there a motion for the item?
Yeah, motion made.
Motion by Commissioner Rodriguez. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by the Vice Mayor. Discussion. Commissioner Good.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, this is a pretty, this is a highly complex contract that we have before us. For me, it requires a bit more than just a week review, and particularly with no competition of all these other items that we had to review at the same time. I guess for probably dealing with the contract terms on this contract here, probably the most important thing that strikes me is that we all recognize that this is a, a 10-year no-bid contract.
No, it's five years.
It says five years with an additional five-year renewal. So that's a 10-year.
Yeah, that has, that's subject to commission.
Well, that's still subject to a 10-year no-bid contract, because if we choose to approve the next five years, it does not need to go out the bid. We are essentially approving 10 years' worth of no-bid contract. Now, other parts, okay, well, it's, it's a five-year contract.
It's a five-year renewal with a five-year extension if we choose it.
Which makes 10 years.
Is there a convenience clause in it?
Well, I'm certain there probably is somewhere, because I'm going to make a, a reference to that now. Part of the contract also, which I didn't quite understand is, is that OMI has the opportunity to give 180 days to terminate, but yet, the city is required to give 365 days, a full year. So that doesn't seem to be fair.
Mr. Dodge?
That is correct. That's in the contract.
So another part of the contract was of a concern for me, which, it's not really a part of the contract, but it is a cost to the contract, and it's the maintenance and repair expenditures. And so I know that in, a couple of years ago, we went from $750,000 allocation to a $1.5 million allocation. One of the things that doesn't show up anywhere is, you know, what has been the historical cost for the maintenance and repair, because that's sort of like a change order, but a, but an authorized change order. In other words, they can go ahead and do certain work, and then we have to reimburse them for their work. And that includes them getting subcontractors to do things. We have to reimburse them. So I don't know what the amount of that is, but it should be something that's available to us when we take consideration of this contract. The other thing is, is that, you know, utility billing has been a constant source of complaints, right? So, you know, the question is, why is it not addressed in the new contract? And of course, you know, the audit here today brought up some very important information, and the mayor even made it very clear that if some of these things are going to be addressed, that's going to be an additional cost. Well, typically, you would negotiate costs before you approve a contract. So we are going to try to have a better service capability, but it's going to cost us more, but yet, we don't know what that is, and we're prepared to approve this contract tonight. The other thing is, is that in the contract, the new services, it includes a cost item for exercising and maintaining valves at least once every five years. And I couldn't quite understand that when tonight, just tonight, we approved a $200,000 con, a $200,000 contract. It was item number 28 to R and M Services to perform these services. So if they're performing these services, and they're doing all of the valve operations, why is it even in the contract and we're having to pay for that?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, address that one at a time. That item that was on the agenda is an item that only goes up to September 30th of this year. It is in the contract and one of the requirements to do it in the future. So that is not an additional cost after tonight, because it was not in the prior contract.
I'm glad to hear that, because I did not see the question in the Monday night memo, and it would have been something that I would have looked for.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I did preface this, this with the fact that this very highly complex contract is provided to us with less than a week.
Right.
And a sea of many other very complex items as well. So I'm sorry I couldn't make it by Monday.
I understand.
And we normally get these, and we normally get these memorandums when we get on the dais.
Point of clarification?
Yes.
Am I mistaken? The man, the city administration had sent us a draft document shortly after the meeting two weeks ago regarding what's in the backup today. Has anything changed from that?
Mr. Dodge?
The draft document was prepared prior to the issue of the agenda. I don't believe there were any changes regarding this topic.
When, when did that go out, city manager? When did we receive that?
I believe, I believe it was on Monday, so we had about nine or 10 days.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Good.
I'm glad that you rely on just draft documents that are provided to you instead of having full picture.
Oh, now I'm going to go with point of order.
So I want to move forward.
Point, point, point of order.
I don't, I don't think you meant it, I don't think you meant it the way, the way you're taking it.
Let me clarify. The, the city administration gave the five of us the opportunity to engage...
Okay, that point's been made.
Nine days ago.
Okay.
That's all I'm saying.
Let's move, yeah, and I appreciate that. Let's move on. No one's pointing fingers. We're just saying what we're saying. Go ahead. We're all saying the same thing. Go ahead.
So now I just want to move on to the, you know, what is the procurement code that we are approving this particular item? And so we are approving this in the best interest of the city. And what is the best interest of the city? I bring this up regularly. This is section 35.18.18, best interest of the city. Purchase of contracts, commodities for services are exempt from this section when the city commission declares by a simple majority affirmative vote that the process of competitive bidding and competitive proposals is not in the best interest of the city, or is, is not in the best. The city commission shall make specific factual findings. Emphasize, the city commission shall make specific factual findings that supports its termination, and such, such contracts may be placed on a city commission consent agenda. So we are responsible for the factual findings. So what are the factual findings? So we are responsible for the factual findings. So what are the factual findings?
Mister Utility Director, could you come forward, please? Because Vice Mayor points to the key, the key, the key question in all of this, which is the only question I asked of you. Why is this, doing this right now, why is doing this right now in the best interest of the city?
Tim Welch, Utilities Director, good evening. Uh, it's in the best interest of the city because, um, the, the contractor that we're working with has demonstrated over the last ten years that they can perform these services at a high level for the city. Uh, it, it would be extremely difficult for the city to, uh, replace these services with, uh, city employees and, and to make that transition back to, uh, what previously existed. And, and every phase of the business that we work in, uh, we work, you know, hand in hand and together, and, uh, and we do work on issues continuously. So in my opinion, it, it is, uh, a high level of service that the city gets from the contractor, and it would be my recommendation that we move forward, uh, and continue that in the best interest of the city, because these services are extremely hard to come by, uh, in, in this day and age, and to make that conversion would be, uh, very cumbersome and, uh, and very difficult to find the, the level of skill, the level of, uh, service, and the aptitude to perform these services.
In my discussion with you, 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 you mentioned the, the particular difficulty, which may not have come to mind as you spoke, but I, I'd like you to explore this, because you and I discussed it, that you felt uncomfortable, uh, with the prospect of, of, uh, switching horses in the middle of, uh, of a race that involved, uh, the major renovation of the plant for, uh, for the PFAS. That you felt that, uh, the loss of momentum, the loss of, uh, of currently having, I'm, I'm thinking, I'm paraphrasing what you told me. Can you go over again what, what, the conversation that we had?
Certainly. Um, there are a lot of capital projects that, uh, are in the planning stage, a lot of operating systems that, uh, we have to continue and need to maintain momentum on. And it's very difficult these days for a utility to keep, uh, that pace and, and delivery, along with going through tremendous amounts of, uh, human resources and, and management, uh, obligations, and, and there's significant work that, that's involved. If we were to change course and go back in a different direction, the, the project that we are anticipating, uh, delivering, uh, for PFAS targeted removal and complying with the, the rules that are out there for twenty-thirty-one, this will, will provide a setback to the utility, in my opinion, if we have to go back and, and reverse course and go back in that other direction.
But your comment to me was limited to the next five years, not the, not, not the next ten. In other words, if there isn't, if there is a five-year after this current five years, it's because it's earned. It's not part of your current analysis. Is that, is that correct?
That's correct.
That's, so the, let me paraphrase, because you're, you're an engineer and, and I'm not. So let me paraphrase what I got out of my cut, discussion with you, and you tell me if it's the slightest bit off, off track. The conversation that I heard, the, the translation of the English I heard from you was, look, I got my hands full with this power, uh, with this water plant right now, with this PFAS and everything else. These, these folks are getting the job done, and they're getting it done at, at, at a rate that I feel comfortable with as Utility Director. Going through all of this for, for mere servile compliance with, with some policy will put a huge dent in the operation at the worst possible time, and I don't, I, it's just not, it's, it's not a frustration that we need. My analysis is, both financial and, and operational is, keep the horse you have, let's get the work done, and let's revisit this in five years. Is, did I hear it wrong?
Uh, no, that's correct. That's correct.
All right, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can I have the floor, but?
Yes.
Thank you. So, uh, when we are looking at, uh, what are the factual findings to, um, you know, give, uh, the best interest of the city to stamp it with our signature. So the, the, the factual findings are listed in pages, on page five, under item number sixteen. And they are as follows. It says, out, as outlined above, the city previously conducted a competitive procurement process for these services, which ultimately resulted in a current agreement with OMI. And so, yes, the, the city did, uh, do a, a competitive procurement process. The company that won the bid didn't get to perform like they thought they would be able to, and then OMI was, you know, the second bidder, but yet that contract was actually approved as, uh, best interest of the city, not in what I would consider to be a normal, um, bid award, which would have been, you know, going to the second lowest bidder, right, or the second highest-ranked bidder.
Point of clarif, point of clarification, Mayor, I, I, I really don't wanna interrupt Commissioner Good, but it, it's important to put what's written in the backup in context. May I? Thirty seconds?
You can, after I finish. I don't wanna lose track of what I'm trying to get, get to, if you don't.
If you have, if you have a point of clarification, state it.
I do, I do, because, because what's referenced in the backup doesn't include that the prior vendor broke our plant, that the prior vendor stuck us into, uh, non, uh, health department compliance with bad tests. CH Toomum Hill, prior to.
All right, we don't have to get into the history. I, I.
But, but no, but this was, this was before Commissioner Good sat on this dais. And while he, while he was sworn in, in, in the spring of twenty-eighteen, this conversion wa, uh, would transpired in January of twenty-eighteen, two months before Commissioner Good was sworn in office.
All right.
That's my point.
His point was made. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioner Good.
So the next factual finding is, uh, B. The Utilities Department staff has confirmed that OMI has provided the services required under the current agreement in a satisfactory manner for the last ten years. I'm not necessarily, uh, disapproved, uh, saying anything against that, um, but again, I don't know where there's a performance scorecard on this. Mr. Mayor, you've asked for that for many, many years, and we would be expecting that on a regular basis, and I don't know where those performance report cards are. The daily, uh, C, the daily provision of water and sewer services to the city residents and businesses is a complex endeavor directly impacting the life, health, and welfare of the citizens, residents, and visitors of the City of Pembroke Pines. Yeah, that's true. That's true in every city. That's not a factual finding. That's just a statement. D, OMI has thoroughly demonstrated its significant familiarity with the city's utility system as well as its ability to provide the services under the profo, under the proposed agreement in the same form and manner that is provided since two thousand and fifteen. And I don't disagree with that, but that does give OMI a competitive advantage in a bid process, so, you know, that's not the only determining factor. E, under the current agreement with Operations Management International, the city has been able to limit utility rate increases to the amount prescribed by annual consumer price index adjustments. Our increases are typically, uh, you know, on utility rates, we're dictated by a three-percent annual CPI. That's generous, and it would apply to any company that performs satisfactory services. And then F. The city's, the city's Utilities Department administrative staff have provided that the selection of a new firm to begin providing water and sewer service throughout the city will result in a costly six-month overlap between the present and future providers. So I wanna refer back to what, um, was just referenced here. You know, the transition from US Water to OMI took only three months. OMI, I mean, I believe it was, um, US Water, on November twenty-sixth, said, hey, I, I wanna get out of the contract, and by March one, OMI was in place. And so there was very little overlap. And it hasn't been even presented to this commission in terms of what that would have cost, what it did cost. And it just makes it clear that the urgency, uh, if there is urgency, there's neg, negligible overlap issues.
Point of clarification again.
Go ahead.
Mayor, we, uh, we sued the US Water.
Yes, we were on the lawsuit.
And, and, uh, and so that cost recovery, um, during that transition period is, is something that, uh, the, the courts looked into.
Thank you for clarification. Go ahead, Commissioner.
So I just, I would like to emphasize that it was less than three months before the transition would take place.
That's correct. Go ahead.
So, uh, G, staff has further provided that the introduction of a new contractor who is unfamiliar with the city's utility system may result in an unnecessary risk to the health, safety, and welfare of city residents and businesses. There was no unnecessary risk to public health when US Water transitioned to OMI. And of course, it would be criminal if the existing contractor failed to ensure a smooth transition to a new contractor. And then H, the initial fee for the new agreement is ten million, eleven million dollars, representing an increase of six-hundred-and-seventy-four thousand dollars, over four percent CPI justify in the existing agreement. However, please note that the new agreement includes additional services, including the addition of a sewer vacuum truck to be purchased by OMI and dedicated solely to the service and scope of work for the City of Pembroke Pines contract, including cleaning of twenty percent of sewer manings each year. In addition, the new agreement includes the cleaning of Master List Station Number Four, performance of road restorations for excavations where they repair mains or services up to a hundred square feet, and cleaning all gravity sewer lines and exercising water and wastewater system valves during a five-year period. So this would apply to probably almost any contractor that assumes the services. And the remaining, um, factual findings are, again, without going through them, are factual findings that applies to any contractor that assumes the services. So the only thing that I'm missing in this here as well, uh, is, you know, some sort of comparative analysis, you know, of what OMI, OMI is versus other capable contractors. There are other capable contractors. OMI is not the largest, but they're not the smallest. But there are other capable contractors that are available and are actually willing and, uh, would like to have an opportunity to participate in the City of Pembroke Pines. So one of the things I'd like to do is, uh, the last main point that I wanna make here is, you know, when we talk about convenience, I think the, um, the Utility Director got up and made it clear that there's some sense of convenience that is associated with this. You know, there's a lot of red tape, probably a little bit of time it takes to do things. But convenience can be, um, a pretty tricky thing, too. One of the things is that, um, you know, there's a question about fairness, transparency, competitive procurement, of course, you know, good governance stuff and things like that, if we just are doing things by convenience. And what does it do? It erodes public trust when contracts are awarded or extended simply because it's easier administratively. It can appear like favoritism or laziness, even if unintentional. That perception alone can damage confidence in municipal leadership. It inhibits cost savings and innovations. Competitive bidding often yields better pricing and new solutions. Skipping it in favor of convenience means the municipality could be overpaying or missing out on vendors with better ideas or technology. It could have legal and ethical risks. Many local procurement laws require formal competition for a reason. Repeatedly avoiding these processes, whether out of habit or ease, can violate policy, leaving o, officials open to audits, investigations, or litigation. And it creates a vendor dependency. Over time, a contractor may become entrenched, knowing they are unlikely to face competition. That can reduce their initiative to improve performance or pricing, creating a kind of complacency that isn't necessarily good for public value. So we know that convenience can save time, but it could cost much more in money, trust, or even reputation, that line. So probably, uh, one of the things that I, I really wanted to make a point here is, is, is how can we engage other players that are being impacted by this? And so we have a citizens' budget board, and would it be prudent to have them look at this contract, this no-bid contract, in terms of this procurement and how it would impact, uh, us going forward?
Commissioner Good, that's not their role. Their role isn't to be a mini-city commission. Their role is, is defined by, uh, the, uh, the ordinance that it was created for. Their role is to review the overall spending and the budgets. This is a matter that's before us, and we're certainly capable of making this decision. And you're making a lot of good points, a lot of strong points. However, uh, what I just heard the Utility Director say was, yeah, all that makes sense, except I have a fifty-four-million-dollar tear-up-the-whole-water-plant thing to go through, and I want, and I want the guy on the job who's been doing it for the last ten years. I don't wanna have to train somebody new, uh, to do that while I'm in the midst of, of everything else, because then public, uh, trust is placed at greater risk, because then the water is placed at, at greater risk. He trusts him to deliver water to tap, uh, that is of the same quality as we have now, or better, until such time as his plant is finished. And he's asking for five years. I was, I, I, I get everything that you're saying, and I was kinda there. However, this turned me around. And i, if, if this is what we have to do to keep the water flowing while we do something extraordinary that we've never had to do before, uh, at the water plant, I'm all, I'm, I'm on board. I, I just am, because at the end of the day, whether we do business with this gentleman or that gentleman, the, the most important thing is that we make sure that the public has what they need. And what they need is reliability in water supply, even as we take care of this problem, which came out of nowhere and got dropped on us, because certain corporations got sloppy with their, uh, with their, uh, chemicals or what have you. And so, you know, you're pointing things, you know, uh, you know, like, uh, public trust and stuff like that. Of course, that's gonna pierce every, every conscience on this board. However, sometimes what you have to do is you gotta separate the issues. And this is what I heard the Utility Director say. So.
Can, can I speak now, or are you done?
Yeah, I just wanna make it clear that I'm not, you know, listen, I like the OMI staff, and I ain't got no issues with them, uh, their leadership and whatever. But I'm not making a, a decision on my relationship with, you know, our current contractors, not just them. But, you know, you're at, I'm being asked to make a decision that's in the best interest of the residents and the city. So, um, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to at least have an opportunity to make an amendment, uh, to this item when the time is appropriate. But I will say this, though. You probably should have been the one that wrote this agenda item.
Why?
Because I thought you brought up a very good point, so thank you.
Which, which one?
Go ahead.
Which one?
Go ahead.
Which one? What, I brought up which point? What, the, the point about, uh, the, the construction? I'm sorry, I didn't follow what you said.
No, that's all right. It's okay.
I just liked some people out of the conversation.
You speak very well, and you're, you're.
Well, 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 I asked him, because this, I, I have to tell you, I agree with everything you just said. This is a, this is, you said it, you hit it on the head when you said, this is a complicated matter. It's very complicated. When I looked at this, I gave it side-eye, just like you did, and I said, what's up with this? And he said, at the end of the day, you can either switch horses and take that risk, or you can stay on the one that you know will get you there, while, while you have to jump over fences you never had to, you never had to traverse before. And that made, to me, that made all the difference, as I looked at my, uh, tap water. So, Vice Mayor.
I, uh, first of all, I agree with both of you, because it's capable to. First of all, I agree with both of you because it's capable to agree with points that you both made individually, including the fact that I think OMI does a good job. There are certain aspects, and I pointed it out in the audit discussion, that I think need to be looked at and improved to improve the customer service experience in the city. I would say that, I will say this, and earlier I was very complimentary of city administration. And I continue to believe that they are hard-working public servants. I don't like that I'm being asked to vote on this item, and I've made that very clear. Because, to your point, Mayor, it's our water, there's PFAS, we have a lot of issues. What I disagree with, respectfully, Mr. Welch, is that there is only one company that can do this kind of work. I don't know who asked this question on our Monday night memo. Whoever you are up here, congratulations, it was very well worded. I want to be very, very careful. I'm a commissioner who's been here thirteen months, but I'm by no means a rookie in government. I do take concerns with what you said, Commissioner Good, in the best interest of the city. I do not like appearances that this contract has been in place over ten years, and we are being asked to approve another five and potentially another five. I don't know where I will be in five years, but if this is approved tonight, I will not vote to reauthorize another one without a bid. We need to go out to bids in this city. There are some vendors who have been here decades. I don't think that's right. I don't think that's appropriate, because if they're the best vendors, by the way, I think the world of OMI. But if they are the best vendors, then they could submit to a process run by very capable people like Mr. Gomez, which can potentially produce lower prices. But then we're put in this position where we have a crisis with our water, not the City of Pembroke Pines alone. This is a national issue, as the mayor has mentioned from the US Conference of Mayors, where I believe you attended a few sessions regarding the issue. So it's, I know I signed up for this job. I know that these are the decisions we make. But I am very sympathetic to what Commissioner Good is saying. Because it looks like we are giving, yes, a trusted vendor, a great company, but it looks like we're just saying, here's another five and potentially another five. I don't like that appearance. I don't. And it's not specific to them, it's specific to anybody. I think we should have at some point in the future competitive bids, but I'm conflicted on this because it does have to do with our water. These comments should not be taken as a lack of confidence in OMI. Absolutely not. That gentleman right there is wonderful at what he does, and I appreciate the service that you all provide the city. I just don't like the lack of a procurement process for this. I appreciate that the three of you who have been here before, Commissioner Schwartz, Commissioner Good, and Mayor Castillo, provide. I try to wait on these items for you all to speak, because you have the knowledge and the experience that I lack from being up here. So I appreciate the three of you, even if at times we can get passionate with what we're saying. I appreciate you. Those are my thoughts. If I'm here in five years and this comes back up, I'm voting for it to go out to bid. And it's going to be hard for me to ever sit up here and grant long-term, decades-long terms, contractors who have provided services to the city with a no-bid and not going back out to a procurement process. We have very, very capable folks. Mr. Gomez is exceptional. I don't have an objection in the future to go out to a procurement process for this service or any other service. Thank you.
Commissioner Rodriguez.
Thank you. I might sound like I'm echoing again, but I did kind of prepare some commentary. So I do want to read that into the record. I want to start by acknowledging and respecting the recommendations of the Utilities Department. I had the privilege of going out to both the water plant and the wastewater plant, not only with just our Utilities Department, but with the vendor Jacobs, and seeing all the work and the partnership that goes hand-in-hand between the department and Jacobs. So I know that the recommendation comes from a really good place, because they are the ones working on the day-to-day operations for that. And understandably, it's not just the PFAS filtration, from my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong. We also have a full electrical grid capital project coming up at the water treatment plant. We all, that's obviously a bit of a smaller project, but there are a lot of things that are going to be coming up. And aside from a couple billing hiccups, I know we're servicing the entirety of Pembroke Pines. So for us to not be inundated with commentary about water billing is a good thing, because we are servicing one hundred and seventy thousand residents and their homes. So keeping that perspective, I know we do get a lot of questions about billing. And they are, from my experience personally, been sorted out. It may take a minute. But I know that, at least through the Utilities Department, I assume into the Jacobs world, they have been very, very responsive. With that said, though, I think I would like to call us to, I don't know if it needs to be a motion or something organized, but we do need a workshop on our bidding policies. I think this is, no, on bidding in general, a broader policy discussion on how long our contracts should be, what are the exceptions? Can we discuss some kind of parameters as to what we can work on? Because this has not just come up with this contract, and this is the larger discussion that we're having on now, but Transportation Authority, I've brought this commentary up again. With our golf course, we were even threatened from the day is that they were going to take away the contract. So I really do not want to keep bringing this up. I think we need to sit down and have a larger conversation, whether it's a half-day, whatever it may be. You know, our schedules, at least on my end, I'm open to, with the exception of a couple dates over the summer or when we come back in August, to have a really in-depth discussion. Because we can continue to comment this over and over again, but if we don't sit down and write out a policy for it, we're gonna keep doing it. And I don't want to get into another meeting again, because I know that we are going to have other meetings. We have Calvin Giordano contract coming up. We need to have this discussion before this huge group of very, very large contracts come up.
Mr. Dodge, could you arrange for that?
We can arrange for it in August.
And again, I mean, it's not a critique on Jacobs, it is just a critique on the fact that we do not go out to bid as often as I personally would like to. I think it's good governance to make sure that we're going out to bid, to have the best pricing for the services that we're receiving. And additionally, to simply, if the vendor comes back because they won the bid, amazing. That gives us not only the confidence that they're doing the right job, but that we're getting it at the right price. Because I know we talked a little bit about risk, about the risk of going with somebody else when we are going through so many different kinds of projects. But there's also a risk in losing money. There's a risk in our taxpayers, especially in this moment where everything is so freaking unaffordable for us to just send over a vendor and say, yeah, whatever money you kind of ask for, whether, and I understand it's negotiated. And that's why I asked here on the Monday night memo for what are some comparable cities that have these kinds of funding. But it's also our due diligence to make sure we're doing the best that we can with our taxpayer funds and assuring that everything goes through bids so that we can come up with the best, most transparent solution for our city, for the vendors that we choose, and just putting in that due diligence over and over again. And we cannot do that if we don't have a policy workshop on this.
I knew you wrote that question.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much. Commissioner Schwartz.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, colleagues. Every so often, I look into the backup and I have, I go right back to that date in time. And, you know, the Vice Mayor. Vice Mayor, when, in June of 2013, George Platt was the representative for CH Toomam Hill. And he stood at the podium, and he warned the commission, it's not about price. He said it. It's not about price, it's about performance. And what he said about CH Toomam Hill was he looked at Key West and he looked at Tampa. Let's take a look, they've been there thirty years. I remember when George said it. And that just stuck with me when I received a phone call in November of fourteen from US Water, from their president, and wanted to figure, he was asking me if I can get support, if I can give him support to keep US Water around. And he was calling me because Mayor Ordus placed an item on the agenda, terminating them.
This was what?
This was in fourteen, yeah. Yeah. So what I told them then was, I said, Mayor Ordus doesn't put items like that on the agenda. I said, but what we did was we allowed them to gracefully step away so that we didn't train wreck their ability for procurement all over the country, Vice Mayor. Because if we had terminated them, they would have had to put on their application that they got terminated by the City of Pembroke Pines. So we were able to transition this arrangement, but we wound up in litigation anyway. Because we didn't just have one bad water reading, we had two. The latter one gets more attention, but we had problems before that. What we found was, well, going back to 2013, I was elected in twelve because for a lot of different reasons, one of them being the increase in water rates in the city. Residents faced a thirty-four percent increase in a very short period of time. And so I was committed to not raising a dime. City administration found a way to use economies of scale, buying stuff that we couldn't do. And it's all in the backup, you can see where the savings were. But there were nineteen individuals that were running our plant. Seventeen of nineteen stayed, the other two just didn't pass the drug test. Okay? So during that time period, that transition period, with the first private vendor, I started getting calls about, hey, they're changing things around. Like, there's a certain formula that comes out of the ground, a certain amount of lime that you have to blend. And see the engineer smiles, like, how the heck does this guy know this stuff? Because I got engaged in the process, not only just saving jobs, saving money, but making sure that what they promised they were delivering on. And lo and behold, because they wanted to save a little bit of money, they broke a lot of stuff. And CH Toomam Hill came to the commission as the number two. And they not only took over the operations, they were in a very difficult position because the outgoing company didn't quite share all the information that they should have been sharing. So the commission at the time went through a process, and it wound up being at a fire hydrant, Rose Price Park, that ultimately got the attention of everybody. Now, out of that came two great people that came to the city, John Cooper and Paul Thompson. And certainly Mike Bailey, and now we have Mr. Welch. We have really smart people that are overseeing the operations of our water utility, day in, day out. And we have staff, believe it or not, we have staff with OMI that were city employees. Some are still here. What I don't want to confuse is, as I mentioned earlier during the commission audit report, is the city's inability to move from a postcard in the way that we do meter reading to somehow blame the vendor for that antiquated process. Back in 2012, Vice Mayor, I had a motion, it was June of twelve. I had a motion to use proceeds from the city center to put automated water meters throughout the entire city so that people could actually view their bill live in case there was a toilet leak. I didn't get support in twelve.
And thank God for that, because there wouldn't have been enough money.
Again, we're not going to replay, we're not going to replay that.
Well, you just replayed it.
I'm just bringing the Vice Mayor up to speed, because he asked.
Well, let's bring him up to speed.
Some of the things that were mentioned in the commission auditor's report are things that were attempted years ago. And there's some things that we haven't moved on from. So this is a separate issue from the procurement process that I think, and I mentioned at the last meeting or the meeting before that, about how are we going to handle contracts going forward? We had that discussion, and I agree with Commissioner Rodriguez, I welcome a workshop. That being said, and I'm wrapping this up, Mayor. The first few years of OMI, they were in reaction mode and trying to figure out how much stuff is broke. Now, the horse is actually running from the front instead of being whipped from behind. Five years, okay, none of us will, none of us, none of us. Five years goes well beyond what the voters allow us to stay here for. So I echo the Vice Mayor's sentiments. None of us will be here. There's no guarantee, but I can tell you this, I have the utmost confidence in the vendor that we currently have. And so do my residents that I talk to every day. I remember, I remember what happened during Irma and the crisis to be able to turn things around to get potable water to the city. I remember how, whether it's Cooper and Thompson and Bailey and, Mr., you shouldn't have to deal with what we dealt with. There's two things, there's two things. Water utility and dispatch, those are the two things that keep me up at night. Because they both have to work. You cannot have failure, period, when it comes to public safety. So I'm happy to support this. I'm happy to support the item. I have every utility director, and Mr. Welch and I haven't sat down yet, every utility director has heard me have to nag their ear. Because I don't want to go back to the way it was. There's no way, absolutely no way. And the city manager, through workshops, through other presentations, the one with the build, he's going to keep rates level. You can only do that with certainty. You go out to bid. We found out through other means, sometimes prices go up.
We're running short on time, so.
So, anyway, I'm happy to support this item tonight. And I'm looking forward to the workshop and how we can continue this conversation. But thank you, Vice Mayor, for asking me to give you a little bit of background.
Okay.
Sorry, I forgot to mention something. I think, again, to echo Commissioner Good's point on the way that this was written out on this item for us on the agenda, I did not really appreciate the factual finding as being the title for that specific section. And the information was very useful. However, some of it was more perception of somebody rather than actual factual, than factual finding. And I understand that, obviously, we had a really hard time from 2013 to 2014 in that transitionary period in an emergency way. But I don't think that that should keep us from going out to bid in the future, because ideally, if we go out to bid, we're performing the process of that transition a lot smoother than in an emergency such as this one. Any good vendor, any professional vendor, would have the, would be able to well-transition this into whatever vendor it comes next after that, or, you know, if they say the same, whatever it may be. But I don't think that that needs to be a reoccurring justification for not going out to bid, because I think it was an exceptional moment. So those are my last comments.
Yeah, and I want to thank you all. And Vice Commissioner Good said he wants to offer an amendment, and we'll certainly have to listen to that. Look, I mean, this is not the typical decision that we're asked to make. Look, I mean, it's, this is, this is not the typical decision that we're asked to make. And, uh, I, I've drawn the conclusion that I had, as I explained, based on extraordinary circumstances. But I also thought about cutting the baby in half, and what happens there is where staff don't see a, a critical number of years, they start, they start looking around, and then all of a sudden you don't have the finest team in town because they're looking to jump on somebody else's bandwagon. This is a, this is a, this is a profession in which people jump from company to company sometimes, and you lose that when you don't have a, a critical mass of, of, of years. And so, it's, it's a very complicated question. Commissioner Good, you had a, uh, and, and, and I do agree that there are other companies out there that, that are capable. The question is about timing and when that makes sense for a, for a client base. You had a, an amendment to offer.
And, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, and I, and I do recognize the perspective that you put. I do want to also make clear that all the improvements that are being done to our facilities, uh, you know, are being done by other firms.
Yep.
And this contract is not just for the plants, it's also for everything in the field, which nothing is really being done out there either. So, but, uh, your point is well taken, and, and considering your points and considering, uh, Commissioner Hernandez, uh, you know, point about, you know, the limitations on the contract and Commissioner Rodriguez on, you know, the workshop. I'd like to make a, um, amended motion that this is, that this is a, a two-year contract. Propose that it's a two-year renewal where we would get a workshop where we can let the case be made if we should go forward without having a bid, and we want to continue with the same contractor.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
There's not a second, my, my concern, not for me yet. My concern is, again, that what is the federal government deadline on, Mr. Manager, on the PFAS? I don't want to call, is it remediation? What, what's the, the proper word for return?
It's April sixteen, twenty thirty-one.
Okay, that's, that's the issue that I would have with two years. Um, I, I can't second it because it's too short of, of a time period.
All right, well, I just wanted to, again, ask the, well, I'm not going to ask anymore. Again, I just want to make it clear that the improvements for the PFAS is, is being done by a totally different engineering firm, different contractors and things.
Well, we haven't selected that firm yet, right?
No, because, uh, no, I believe that we move forward with the engineer who's going to be doing the design work for the PFAS, is that correct?
We haven't, we haven't selected who's, who's going to do it, have we?
No, sir, we're in the process of selecting, it's in the CCNA process, so there's, uh, proposals that are being reviewed.
Oh, that's right, you're not bringing it back to us until you're ready for a contract award.
The selection will be brought back to you.
Right. It will what?
Yeah.
For the contract, for the award.
For the design, yes.
All right, but we did approve you moving forward in that process.
Yes, he did.
Very good. All right, so, um, then I'd like to make another motion then, Mr. Mayor, if I may. And I'd like to address directly, Mr., Vice Mayor Hernandez's point about not approving another five year after the initial five year, and so I'd like to remove the second five-year, uh, potential renewal from this contract.
Is there a second to that?
I could second that.
Okay, discussion on, uh, first, first and foremost, Mr. Director, do you have a, an objection to that? That structure?
To, to not have the potential for a renewal?
Yes.
I wouldn't, I would not recommend removing that, I would rather see it in because it, I think if, as long as, uh, the city is getting that, that kind of service from the contractor, I think that, uh, you know, you always have the ability, if you're not getting performance, to terminate. I think that termination, the termination clauses are in the agreements that if the city would want to do that, you, you could do that.
Do you think that the, uh, the remediation will happen well before the deadline, or as the deadline is approaching, or it's too, it's too tentative to say? Because the deadline is about five years, let's call it.
Having.
Right?
Having worked here for five months, uh, I, I don't know how long it will take us to go through the full process of procurement, the design, the permitting, sometimes these things do stretch out.
So, because maybe, maybe the renewal doesn't want to be five years, maybe the renewal wants to be two or three years.
In other words, what you're saying is, if
It's five years with a.
Five years with the possibility of
A two or a three.
Of a two or a three.
Right, rather than a five years with, with, with a five-year renewal.
That brings us into twenty thirty. That would bring us right into twenty thirty-one.
Right.
Mayor?
I'm just, I'm just asking, I'm, I'm, I'm asking relative to his, uh, his motion, if that, if that fits better within your, your thinking.
Mayor, I'm trying to follow that.
If we just go with the five, then, then you have the, the, the deadline problem. Commissioner Schwartz?
Is there, I, uh, through the chair, is there a second, are we still discussing?
Well, I, we're still trying to form.
Okay, okay, so.
I think there's a consensus here that. You second, you second it, so it's just five?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so, so I, I just want to make sure that there's a motion on the table, I can't support the motion. We're going to kneecap the vendor at year four. We have a deadline of five years.
Yeah.
And, and it works against, we just, Mayor, you just said that people jump ship if they don't have certainty. Imagine we're in year three, working through a project, and there's not the potential extension. We may not, we'll be in a very difficult position with respect to, um, uh, people having to make decisions, and I don't feel that we should bind a future commission to an RFP of this size. If it's the intent of a sitting body to give notice of three hundred and sixty-five days, that's a prerogative of the sitting commission, not kneecap a future commission five years from now.
Okay. Commissioner Rodriguez?
I think with that commentary, I wouldn't be able to support just doing the five years. From my understanding, industry standard is five to ten years of, of contract of this size, and from what I've understood is that the licensing and the people there, well, one of that, what, some of them have been there since they were employees of ours, but that recruitment and that stability is really hard to come up around with. Um, and even doing a two, three, three years seems more preferable, but because we do have the right to terminate with a year out, I think, in my perspective, that gives us enough time to, to actually do it, and I, and I agree with Commissioner Schwartz. I do, I wouldn't want to put this into the, the next commission halfway through kind of putting them in that position where, in, in the case that there is no institutional knowledge coming forward.
So what's the process then if, can you amend your motion?
Sure we can. Well, um, I, you know, I, you guys, I'm thinking the other way. I'm thinking if you do it now, by the time that they get ready to do all the PFAS, whoever, whoever, whoever is here will have plenty of time to have known the system and will do exactly what you all are expecting, it'll work. I mean, I understand what you're trying to say about being in the middle. The question is, is PFAS, is that designed by thirty-one, or, or is that the actual installation?
It's got to be finished.
Well, let's let him finish. Excuse me?
To be completed with construction.
Constructed, right?
Operational.
Okay.
We need to be PFAS-free by that date.
Sure.
They're test, they're testing, uh, they're testing in, in April. April thirty-one, we have to.
All right, folks, we have a very long agenda, so what, what's your pleasure?
Let's go and call the question, please.
Okay. Uh, the, 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 the motion is five years and no renewal. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
No.
Okay, can I motion then to approve, am I in order, or no?
You're in order.
Okay. Motion to approve for five years with a three, up to a three-year renewable term.
Is there a second? Is there a second? I'll second the, I'll second the item. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Wait, wait, before you go, Mr. Mayor, I just want to ask a quick question.
Come on, let's go, let's do this, we've got a long agenda.
I know.
Okay, come on.
This is kind of.
All right, let's go.
So I have a question to the, uh, city attorney.
Yes, sir.
And so, Mr. Attorney, if, if my vote is not on the prevailing side, do I have the opportunity to bring this back for reconsideration later?
Six months.
Six months.
Six-month timeframe under the code, if you will. Yeah, it's a six-month timeframe.
If I'm not on the prevailing side, I will not be able to bring this back.
Correct.
That's correct.
Six months.
Okay, thank you.
It's the prevailing side, it's the majority of the.
He's referring, he's referring to his previous vote.
Mayor, on the, on, on the, on the three-year suggestion, again, um.
Go ahead.
On the three-year suggestion, we're, we're still in the same position. Uh, the contract language allows a, a one-year, uh, notification, which means every budget year between now and five years from now, uh, we can direct staff to provide, in lieu of this one-year, two-year, five-year extension, if, if the maker of the motion would be, uh, would be open, I don't want to do a substitute, an amendment, to have, um, the utility director provide a performance metric on an annual basis on, on their performance, and provide it to the city commission.
The reason substitute amendments don't work is because you can only do two of them. And he gets to substitute his original motion.
I'm not, I'm not offering a substitute, what I said was, I'm offering a friendly amendment.
That's what works.
To have the utility director on an annual basis during budget, during budget time, to provide a performance metric of the vendor.
I'd be comfortable, but you'd have to attach a date.
Say again?
Can you attach a date to it?
Well, it would be, it'll be, it'll be annually, it'll be annually throughout the, the, throughout the first term of the contract.
So, you proposing that to the original motion of five and five?
Yes.
So he's proposing five and five with a, um, with a performance appraisal length?
To the city commission on an annual basis during, uh, during budget year, uh, during the budget, uh, time, which would be September.
That's what he's offering.
Uh, can I?
Yes.
Comment on that? On the KPIs that they're supposed to bring forth, I believe, eh, every quarter, every three months, whatever that may be, can we also request for those to be sent to us? If they're going to be sent to administration, can they also be sent to us for our consideration? Those would be, the KPIs would be coming every, every three months?
Well, with, with respect, with respect to the KPI, and I, I, on an annual basis, on an annual basis, I believe a report for public consumption needs to be on our desk to discuss it. The reason being is because every September, we set the, the water rate. Okay, so we just blend that right in there, it'll be a part of the backup, and we can have a discussion.
I'm, I'm with you, I'm with you.
If, with respect to the, to the, to the quarterly reports, we're entitled to it on a, on a monthly basis, we just have to ask the manager for that. I believe that there's going to be a transition with the KPIs and a learning curve between staff and vendor to kind of figure that out. I wouldn't want to start right away, if, if Commissioner Rodriguez, if you say six months from the time of the contract, I'm fine, three months out. I don't think there's enough of a learning curve, which will give two KPI opportunities for the annual report, so that there's no surprises. I, I'll tell you this. The, uh, the manager has been extremely open and, and and whenever we've asked for reports, we get them.
Okay, but my motion, then I have, we have to vote down my motion. I had a second?
No, it's a friendly amendment.
It's a friendly amendment.
Okay, so what?
Five and five, annual report, budget time. With KPIs.
Could you make it the, the date that, by, by which we receive that report, September thirty, the end of the fiscal year?
No, uh, Vice Mayor, we, we, one, one time in September, we will have an item on the agenda during the budget cycle just for the water rates. That would be the appropriate time, whatever that date is, it would be on that agenda for a review prior to, or it has to be combined with.
I'm going to accept it, just say it, like, real quick, exactly how you want it.
At.
Five and five?
Five and five, uh, at, when the city manager provides the, the commission, the water rate, um, the water rate. Help me out, city manager, what do you call it?
Setting of the water, it's setting of the utility rates.
What we would do at budget time is, that's when the water rates basically are established.
Hearing one or hearing two, when do you usually do that? Thank you, second reading of the budget, Vice Mayor.
Second reading of the budget.
Okay, so I have to accept it?
You don't have to, I mean, I'd like you to.
No, I, I want to accept it. I just need to say, do I need to verbalize it?
No, it's, it's crystal clear, Madam Plurk, do you have the, do you have this motion?
I don't, I don't know if I can do.
I'm hearing, I'm hearing, I'm hearing, I'm hearing five and five, performance review, KPIs, and uh, it's all due by second reading of the budget.
Mayor, if I may?
Correct?
I have a question, that, that's my understanding, that the motion was Commissioner, was the Vice Mayor's motion?
Yes.
With a friendly amendment by Commissioner Schwartz.
Right.
And that, and that is the five plus five, KPIs plus.
And I, and I will sec, and I will second his amended motion.
Okay.
Okay, so now we have an amended motion to repeat. It's five and five.
KPIs.
KPIs, performance evaluation, all due by the second reading of the budget. Everybody understand the motion?
I understand, I just want to make one last comment, I know we have a very, very long agenda. I'm going to repeat, this is not a reflection on OMI. Peter, you do a wonderful job. My concern is the lack of bidding in the city government on this mat, uh, on this type of a contract. I don't like the appearance of it, I want more transparency for future procurement processes of this magnitude. That is, I, I just want to make that crystal clear, this is not against OMI as a company. You do great work. It's a philosophical issue that I take with the process.
I think we all feel the same way.
I just don't want them to take it personally.
Any further comments on this? Any from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion as amended, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Show passes unanimously.
For the record, Mayor and Commissioner, the permanent number for number thirty-one is thirty-nine, ten, thirty-nine, ten.
Okey-dokey. What is our next item?
Thirty-two, Mr. Mayor.
Thirty-two, let's go.
With your permission, Mayor, this is motion to adopt proposed resolution number twenty-two-five-R-seventeen, which is a resolution of the city commission of the City of Pembroke Pines, Florida, approving the twenty-two-five, twenty through twenty-twenty-nine Community Development Block Ramp, that's the CDBG Consolidated Plan, and the twenty-two-five through twenty-twenty-six Action Plan, directing the city manager to submit the city's consolidated plan and action plan to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, authorizing the city manager to execute all required documents, providing for conflicts, severability, and providing for an effective date. On the floor is number thirty-two.
Assuming there's any such department, any such plan, and any such person there to, uh, read the, uh, the, the plan, is there a motion?
I, I move it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is seconded, made, any discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, huh? Is there a public hearing?
Yes, there would be.
Public hearing is open. Speak up, if anyone wants to speak on this item, seeing none, public hearing is closed. Motion has been made and seconded, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, show passes unanimously, that item is now.
The record, Mayor and Commissioner, number thirty-two's number is thirty-nine, eleven, thirty-nine, eleven. Thirty-three is up, Mr. Mayor, number thirty-three for the record.
Thirty-three is done.
With your permit, this has actually been adopted, moving on to thirty-four with your permission, Mayor?
Yes, please, thirty-four.
Thank you, Mayor, twenty, twenty-two-five dash R-nineteen is a motion to approve proposed resolution of the twenty-two-five-R-nineteen, which is a resolution of the city commission of the City of Pembroke Pines, Florida, approving the second amendment to the license agreement regarding Pembroke Pines Mitigation Bank between the City of Pembroke Pines and the Wetlands Bank Company, LLC, authorizing the appropriate city officials to execute the necessary documents to effectuate this resolution, providing for conflicts, severability, and providing for an effective date.
Is there a motion?
Number thirty-four on the floor.
Is there a motion?
Yes, I did.
Uh, moved, moved by Commissioner Rodriguez, is there a second? Seconded by the Vice Mayor, any discussion? Hearing none, any from the public, seeing none, all those in favor? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye? Any opposed? Show passes unanimously.
The record, Mayor Commission, permit number is thirty-nine-twelve for number thirty-four. Thank you, Mayor.
Thirty-seven.
Next up coming up is number thirty...
Thirty-seven, we did thirty...
Yeah, we did thirty-six.
We did thirty-six, right?
Did thirty-five, we did thirty-six.
We did thirty-five and thirty-six. We're on thirty-seven.
Number thirty-seven, for the record, Mr. Mayor Commission, if you give me one second, please. Thirty-seven is a motion to adopt proposed resolution number twenty-twenty-five R twenty-three, which is a resolution of the city commission of the city of Pembroke Pines, Florida, approving and authorizing the purchase of real property from Windmill Reserve Homeowners Association, Inc., generally located along the northerly side of future Pembroke Road extension and west of one-ninety-sixth Avenue for a negotiated amount of one million, five hundred thousand dollars, subject to the terms and conditions as set forth in the purchase and sale agreement attached here to is exhibit number A and incorporated herein by reference, authorizing and directing the proper city officials to take any and all action necessary to effectuate the intent of the resolution and to effectuate the acquisition of such real property in accordance with the terms of the purchase and sale agreement, and any amendments thereto, providing for a conflict, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. Thirty-seven on the floor for consideration, number thirty-seven.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Rodriguez. Is there a second? Seconded by the Vice Mayor. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I, what, what are we purchasing? This is for, um...
Mr. Dodge?
Yeah, what's this purchase for?
Vice Mayor, you and I discussed it. You're probably not familiar with it. It's regarding the property on Pembroke Road. And, uh, it's, uh, a, a project the city is looking at for, uh, environmental reasons. You got it?
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none from the public? All those in favor say aye? Any opposed? Show this passes unanimously, Mr. City Manager.
The record, Mr. Mayor, the number is thirty-nine thirteen, thirty-nine thirteen.
Number thirty-eight?
Yes, Mayor, if I may read. Number thirty-eight for the record is a motion to adopt proposed resolution number twenty-twenty-five R twenty-four, which is a resolution of the city commission of the city of Pembroke Pines, Florida, approving and authorizing the purchase of real property from Howard... Forget my turning of the page.
Godowski.
And the estate of Robert Glauckum, spelled G-L-A-C-C-U-M, located at southwest twelfth street. That's what it says, Pembroke Pines, Florida, for the negotiated amount of five hundred, one thousand, zero fifty-four, flat per acre, subject to the terms and conditions as set forth in the purchase and sale agreement attached here to is exhibit A and incorporated herein by reference, authorizing the, and directing the proper city officials to take any and all action necessary to effectuate the intent of the resolution and to effectuate the acquisition of such real property in accordance with the terms and of the purchase and sale agreement, and any amendments thereto, providing for conflicts, severability, and providing for an effective date.
Motion?
Thirty-eight on the floor.
Moved by the Vice Mayor, is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Rodriguez. Any discussion? Any from the public? All those in favor say aye? Any opposed? Show passes unanimously. Item thirty-nine.
The record, Mayor Commission, it's on the floor. The number is thirty-nine fourteen is the permit. Number thirty-nine is next up, Mayor?
Yep.
Hold on a sec. Thirty-nine for the record is the, is a motion to adopt proposed resolution number twenty-twenty-five R twenty-five, which is a resolution of the city commission of the city of Pembroke Pines, Florida, approving and authorizing the purchase of real property from Brian S. Glauckum, G-L-A-C-C-U-M, Amparo, that's A-M-P-A-R-O, Glauckum, and the estate of Robert F. Glauckum, located at nine-zero-zero southwest one-ninety-sixth Avenue, Pembroke Pines, Florida, for a negotiated amount of four million, seven hundred fifty thousand dollars, flat, subject to the terms and conditions as set forth in the purchase and sale agreement attached here to is exhibit A and incorporated herein by reference, authorizing and directing the, uh, proper city officials to take any and all action necessary to effectuate the intent of this resolution and to effectuate the acquisition of such real property in accordance with the terms of purchase, purchase and sale agreement, and any amendments thereto, providing for conflicts, severability, and providing for an effective date.
Is there a motion? Moved by, uh, Commissioner, Commissioner Good. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor. Is there any discussion here? Hearing none, any from the public? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Show passes unanimously.
Permit number, Mr. Mayor, is number thirty-nine fifteen.
Tonight.
Thirty-nine fifteen. Next up is forty, with your permission, Mayor.
No, no, this is, this is, this is going to be huge. Forty-one.
Forty, 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 Mayor.
I'm sorry?
Forty.
Forty.
Is it forty?
Yes. May, may, may I proceed, Mayor?
Hold on.
We just finished thirty-nine.
Yes, forty, I'm so sorry.
That's okay, Mayor, no, we're all, we're all keeping, keeping score. Number forty is motion to adopt proposed resolution number twenty-twenty-five R twenty-six, which is a resolution of the city commission of the city of Pembroke Pines, Florida, committing to fund operations and maintenance for Pembroke Road after completion of the widening and extension from Dykes Road to U.S. Project, U.S. twenty-seven project, and providing for an effective date. Number forty on the floor.
Moved by Commissioner, uh, Good, seconded by the Vice Mayor. Uh, the completion of which will happen, Mr. Engineer Wen? Starts in twenty-six and it ends what?
By thirty-one.
While I'm still young?
Yeah, right.
So what's coming first, a PFAS fix or Pembroke Road?
Because I don't want a five-year extension on that deal. Okay, all right, go ahead. Any, any, anything further on forty?
Number forty, yep.
Any from the public? All those in favor say aye? Any opposed? Show passes unanimously.
The record number is number thirty-nine sixteen. Next up, number forty-one, Mayor.
Rolling along.
Thank you, Mayor, may I proceed? This is the motion to adopt proposed resolution number twenty-twenty-five R twenty-seven, which is a resolution of the city commission of the city of Pembroke Pines, Florida, approving a drainage agreement with the South Broward Drainage District, better known as the SBDD, for the Pembroke Road Expansion Project, number M-I-R-A, number zero-zero-one-dash-zero, double zero four, and authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement and providing for an effective date.
Moved by, uh, Commissioner Good. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by, uh, Commissioner Rodriguez. Any discussion? Hearing none, any from the public? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye? Any opposed? Show passes unanimously.
Forty-two, Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
If I may read. And, and, and that number for the record is number thirty-nine seventeen, for the record. Forty-two, Mayor, if I may?
Yep.
This is, this is a motion to adopt proposed resolution number twenty-twenty-five R twenty-eight, which is a proposed resolution of the city commission of the city of Pembroke Pines, Florida, adopting the city's twenty-twenty-five watershed master plan, providing for implementation and providing for an effective date. Number forty-two on the floor.
Moved by Commissioner Good, seconded by Vice Mayor. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, any from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye? Any opposed? Show passes unanimously.
The record, Mayor Commission, forty-two's permit number is number thirty-nine eighteen. Next up is forty-three, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
May I proceed? Motion to adopt proposed resolution number twenty-twenty-five R twenty-nine, which is a resolution of the city commission of the city of Pembroke Pines, Florida, approving the third amendment to the I.L.A. in substantial form and authorizing the execution of the third amendment and restatement of the transportation system, SRTAC inter-local agreement. It's mouthful, with the Broward County Board of County Commissioners, providing for conflicts, severability, and providing for an effective date. Number forty-three on the floor for consideration, forty-three.
That's moved by, uh, Commissioner Good, seconded by Commissioner Schwartz. Any discussion?
Uh, Commissioner Good? I just have a couple of questions on this, um... So... If I'm not mistaken, this, one of the, uh... One of the revisions to this agreement allows us to utilize SRTAC dollars to match other, um, funding agency grants, like, so if the FTA, you know, had a, a grant out, we had to do a match, we could use the SRTAC dollars for the match?
I'll let Mr. Kennedy respond legally. I think that's a correct assessment, Commissioner.
And that's huge.
You'd ask me?
No, I'm saying, that's, that's a, that's a...
It's a supplement to whatever we want to do.
Carl Kennedy, City Engineer, uh, yes, that's, uh, that will be one of the options that, uh, we'll be able to utilize.
I mean, because, because, because all these changes here to SRTAC, the way that they're releasing it to us, we normally have to match the dollars in order to do projects. But this one here is allowing us to use, like, federal funds to match the dollars.
Yes.
Well, that's, that's never been done before. That's good. The other thing too is, uh, is traffic calming, uh, SRTAC eligible?
I don't think that's one of the, uh, one of the approved items. I, I will, I'll, I'll confirm that for you, though.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, it looks like they're breaking, uh, you know, new ground, so I'd like to know if traffic calming is considered to be, uh, SRTAC eligible.
Well, well, they're, they're removing the, um, uh, capital projects from the SRTAC and, and just giving us money for operation and maintenance.
I, I thought I read this, that if we had other capital projects we want to do, we would have to match it, but...
Well, yeah, but there, the, the, the SRTAC isn't, we're not submitting, uh, projects and having them, ranking them, and then giving us money for it, you know? Uh, if we, if we need money for matching for grants, they'll do that. But they're, they're going to give us a certain amount each year to do the O and M work.
Well, I, I see that, but, uh, I thought that this also allowed us to do projects too.
Yes, it does.
Because the city manager did make reference to this about potentially, uh, using this as a, as a, as a revenue source for a revenue bond. Is that correct, Mr. City Manager?
Yes.
We had discussed that. As far as the ability to do that, I have to defer to the city attorney.
Okay, because that, because, yeah, because that's a question that I have about, you know, can we leverage these dollars for, for cap, you know, for, for a revenue bond?
That's our initial thought, uh, Commissioner, but we're not positive.
I have an old business item on that coming up as well.
Okay.
You, we're on the same freeze.
Okay. All right, those are my questions, so thank you.
Any further discussion on that?
Yes, Mayor.
Yes.
So I brought the, the phone check, um, a few weeks ago. Three point three million? That's what we can expect annually.
No.
Yeah, in the future.
It's not annually. This year, and then it's one point seven.
This year, then, then one seven, but it, it's a... What we can't use the money for is a substitute for our normal projects. It's a, it's a supplement too. Uh, the revenue bond was, uh, was mentioned. City Attorney, uh, it was mentioned at the leak. And what I recall hearing was it's not eligible for revenue. It would have to be, have to be a go-bond type of thing. However, they, because the, uh, commission, Broward County Commission, hadn't voted on it yet, they were still, you know, they weren't all the way in, but they were, they were leaning towards a no. Uh, so we do need to follow up on that. But the one thing I do like about this, third amendment, is the leadership at the Broward County Commission to see this thing through, because this makes sense. We, we get the money now, and we don't have to ask the permission. Uh, it's going to be based on a, on a formula, and we can go up to three years. If we have a project that we want to delay, we can go up to three years based on the size of our city. Other cities, uh, that are smaller can go up to five, I believe, is what it, is what they came down to as far as formula goes.
I, I, just one more question, Mr. Mayor.
Yes?
Are they all, are they still in this ten percent skimming off for community bus operations?
Uh, yeah, that, that hasn't changed. That's still the same. It's going to continue the same.
Okay, thank you.
And this is what's left over.
Okay.
Okay, any further discussion?
Yeah, I have a question for this one.
Okay.
From my understanding, we're getting this ten percent, and previously we did have to kind of justify our projects and get in line. Will we also have that option? Or are we limited to projects, uh, for the amount that we get each year? Let's say we're, we want to, or do we still have the possibility to apply for a larger project?
No, they're, they have, the amount we're going to get is the amount we're going to get.
Okay.
We can save up for, for up to three years. Don't your market.
We got everything? Anything else? Okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Show passes unanimously.
The record, Mayor Commission, forty-three's permit number is thirty-nine nineteen, three-nine-one-nine. Next up is forty-four, Mayor.
Forty-four, please.
Thanks, Mayor Commission. Motion to, uh, uh, adopt the fire assessment, a proposed resolution number twenty-twenty-five R thirty, which is a resolution of the city commission of the city of Pembroke Pines, Florida, relating to the provision of fire rescue services, facilities, and programs in the city of Pembroke Pines, Florida, describing the method of assessing fire rescue assessed costs against assessed property located within the city of Pembroke Pines, directing the preparation of an assessment role, authorizing a public hearing, and directing the provision of notice thereof, and finally providing for an effective date. Number forty-four on the floor for consideration, forty-four.
Motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Rodriguez, seconded by the Vice Mayor. Any discussion on the item?
Yes, Mayor, I have a question for the Fire Chief.
Correct.
I prepped him ahead of time and the city manager as well. Chief, good evening.
Good evening. Mr. Rodriguez, Fire Chief.
I'll be super quick. Just to recap, uh, the request. A few months ago, uh, I had asked for the five-year projection for fire, uh, assessment fees. I know you're still working on it, and you need till the first meeting in, of August to provide that to the commission?
That would be ideal.
Okay. And, uh, second, uh, city manager, uh, the, uh, the captain, uh, moving, uh, having the cover, uh, rescue, uh, there was a percentage goal that we were trying to close. We were trying to get a higher, a higher percentage of not moving people. Um, if we could on a quarterly basis, uh, just get a, an updated report on, uh, on, on the personnel levels. If we're going to be setting the fire assessment fee, I want to make sure that the residents are getting a hundred percent, um, of, uh, of what they're paying for. I, I know we have some staff shortages at the moment. I believe the chief, uh, is actively seeking and recruiting and doing what he has to do. Uh, next year, I want to have a different conversation, saying that we have no vacancies and we're really good. And, uh, but when I look at the, when I look at the budget, what's being proposed, uh, two-hundred-thousand-dollar difference, you know, we have overtime going on, we have, we have, we have opportunities to improve things. I'm happy to support the, the item tonight. The Fire Chief, he's got, he's got some stuff he has to bring back to us in August, and I'll be mentioning the staffing, uh, at the, uh, fire hearing in September, and I'll be mentioning the staffing at the fire hearing in September, just to give you an idea of where, where we're going. Give you plenty of time to get the numbers together.
Not a problem. Thank you.
I have a, a quick comment, not necessarily for you, Chief, you, you can say, but I just want to commend the Fire Department alongside with our management, our administration in having the increase only be $1.43. I think last year, we had a way larger increase. And considering the affordability crisis that we have going on, I'm really glad to see that we're putting our taxes to the best use possible. And if we don't need an increase, not to take the increase. And I under, I understand that one of the fire trucks that we purchased during consent was projected to be a part of this and is no longer part of that, not because we're not going to be able to purchase it, but because we were able to move some funds around and therefore give some kind of break, some affordability and tax break to our residents in lieu of increasing it.
Thank you, Commissioner. If I, if I may, we take pride in how effective our Fire Department is, the high performance of our firefighters, and also the cost efficiency of our operations. So thank you for those comments.
Anything else? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Number 46.
Direct Commission, Mayor and Commission, the current number for number 44 is 3920, 3920.
Number 46.
Thank you, Mayor and Commission. Number 46 on the regular agenda is a motion to establish the millage rate to be advertised in the TRIM notice, as T R I M, Truth in Millage, published by the Broward County Property Appraiser due on Monday, August the 4th, and as set forth in the Agenda Book and published as required by Florida law. Number 46 on the floor.
Same millage rate as before is being proposed. Is there a motion? Moved by the Vice Mayor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rodriguez. Any discussion?
Yeah, I have a very similar comment to what I had before. I want to thank administration for reading the tea leaves and understanding what the financial situation are for a lot of our families, making sure that we're not increasing our millage rate, while obviously some may see a marginal increase for the City of Pembroke Pines. At least we are doing our part to make sure that Pembroke Pines stays affordable for our families.
Thank you very much. I think we all feel the very, very same way. I think it'll be the 11th year in a row
Yes.
that, that the City of Pembroke Pines does not increase the millage rate or, or reduces it over the course of 11 years. I don't know, I don't know many other cities that can say the same thing. Incredibly fiscally responsibly and conservatively run city, and we have great reason to be proud of that. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Show passes unanimously. What is the Resolution Number?
Thank you, Mayor. There's no resolutions by motion, which is allowed by Florida law, and the number and the millage rate is said, proposed millage rate is set forth in the Agenda Book.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
At this moment, I will recess the Pembroke Pines City Commission meeting of June 18th, 2025, and call to order the inaugural, uh, uh, meeting of the Pembroke, of We Love Pembroke Pines Foundation, is it?
Pembroke, Pembroke.
Madam Chair, will you call the roll, please?
Here.
City Manager Dodge.
Here.
City Attorney Goran.
I'm here.
You have a call.
Thank you, Manager.
Item forty-seven, please.
Director, Mr. Mayor, Commission Number forty-seven is a discussion of possible action on a donation in the amount of thirty-five thousand dollars to the We Love Pembroke Pines Incorporated Organization as a matter of record and as described earlier in the separate meeting conducted by the corporation. Thank you, Mayor.
We have a motion. Moved by the Vice Mayor, and seconded by Commissioner Good. Any discussion?
On item forty-seven?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Yeah, just to stay on the record, there's a twenty thousand dollar, roughly twenty thousand dollar insurance, so the organization would be receiving fifteen thousand dollars in order to, as seed money.
Roughly.
Roughly. I'd like to offer that the organization reimburse the city for the thirty-five thousand dollars when donations match the thirty-five thousand dollar threshold.
And then they'd be broke again?
No, sir. That means that it's thirty-five thousand coming in from elsewhere other than taxpayer money.
So when the organization is self-sufficient, the donation can stop?
Well, this is a one-time donation of thirty-five thousand.
We hope.
From the city.
I mean, this is just this donation. I mean, if what you want is for the organization to pay it back, I don't know. You'd have to make that as a motion.
I did.
I'm not prepared to support that at this time. I'd love to see it happen, but I'm not prepared to support that at this time. Because I don't know how it's gonna work out. But you can make that motion.
I'm making the motion.
Is there a second? That motion dies for lack of a second. Anything else on this item, forty-seven? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Show passes unanimously. Item forty-eight.
Mayor and Commissioner Number forty-eight relates to discussion of possible action to change the date of October one, twenty twenty-five, regular meeting in observance of the holiday of Yom Kippur.
I think that's a good idea.
Combine October second, second meeting in October. Combined meeting.
Does that make sense? Because we usually, well, Mr. Manager, tell me, what does October look like for us? Combining the meeting, does that make sense? Or moving the meeting in October, does that make more sense?
I think combining the two, because we would have completed the budget process in September, so combining the first to the fifteenth to make one meeting seems to make sense.
I asked the manager ahead of me making the motion for the second meeting. I cleared it with him beforehand.
Okay. So we're gonna have a combined meeting in October on the fifteenth?
Yeah. This is always the heaviest one.
No, we're actually gonna, if we work it, we'll finish on time tonight. Okay, fine. It's fine by me. Is there any disagreement? So, without objection, so ordered. Go ahead. Do you need a vote? Without objection.
You do need, no, you do need a motion. A motion, formal motion, because you have to.
I moved to combine the October meetings to.
Moved by Commissioner Schwartz.
October fifteenth.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Good. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item forty-eight. Well, that's it. Item forty-nine. Wait a minute. Reports of the League and Representatives. Commissioner Rodriguez, what do you have?
No reports. Just the insulation dinner was the last thing that occurred, and looking forward to the first meeting of the directors coming up.
It was a good meeting. It was very well-run. I mean, it was probably as well-attended as a meeting as I've been to in years. It was really well put together.
I also wanted to mention, I had never been on the League, and I was sworn in, Maria, Commissioner Rodriguez, sorry, was sworn in first. I was sworn in as the alternate. It was really cool to have Sam Goran, our city attorney, being the one swearing us in. I thought that's pretty cool.
They named an award after Sam.
Yeah, no, that too. Let's not talk about it, so his ego doesn't get.
Sam's a very famous guy.
Vice Mayor, did you know that City Attorney Goran has been pro bono for the League for all these years?
Yeah, I did know that. Not since that year, but yes. So I wanted to thank Sam, because that was a really cool moment.
Yep, 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 yep. Very well done. Anything else, Commissioner? And Commissioner Good, anything new at the MPO?
Sure. So first, I'd like to say I was selected again by my peers to be on the executive committee at the Ad Large, so I got another year of that. We also approved the amended budget for our Town Center Mobility Hub, so that got approved. The extra dollars got added. It was really critical, because, you know, it's one of those things where, you know, it was in twenty twenty, by the time we got to the design stage and things like that, you know, cost escalations, and we had to cut out lighting, but the MPO was able to find some dollars in other FTA grants, and we were able to approve that. The other thing is, interestingly, is that some of the money from what was scaled down, what you all remember as being the elevated left-turn lanes for Flamingo, so, you know, we were successful in getting DOT to readdress that and keep it at grade, but that had released a lot of money, and interestingly enough, some of that money has now been earmarked for a preliminary study for rail on US twenty-seven, which might actually be a very interesting concept.
Very smart.
Yeah, because that would then make an east-west corridor eventually a reality too.
I hope they do it, and I hope it's a fast train, and it's just.
It'll have a whole lot less problems than what they have on the east rail corridor, because right now.
There should be a hub somewhere with a parking ride that allows you to get across town using the five ninety-five corridor elevated, so you can get to the, you should never have to drive to the airport or the port. And there should be connections. We're long overdue for that conversation, and I hope they figure that out, because it's the only way to get people out of cars.
Starting to get on the radar.
Sorry, I forgot to mention, on the League of Cities, not necessarily directed, but the League of Cities did partner with the Solid Waste Authority of Broward County in having a forum. I believe a couple of us were there, including Administration. Want to thank Administration for going. We're not part of the Solid Waste Authority, so either way, it's good to have a voice and be part of the conversation, even though we're not part of it. And they did go through the draft. If you haven't read the draft already, I'm sure all of us are quite up to date, but they did go through a couple of questions that even I had from the draft itself, and the meeting was recorded. So if you would like to see it, it is online, and it goes, did a presentation on the draft. Any questions were answered, things like that. So just bringing that to your attention.
Yeah, I mean, we have a delegate who goes to every meeting, and that's the city engineer, and he keeps the city manager and the rest of us informed. He sends us the meetings. I read the draft. I'm sure all of us did. It's promising in many respects. It creates a sense of relief in other respects, and it creates a lot of questions in yet other respects. It's very vague. We have neighboring cities that have asked some very pointed questions about it. I think we were very wise to wait before jumping into a situation that we didn't know what it was about, but we're learning more and more about it. In the fullness of time, we'll have options to choose from, just like we have in the past, and we can move on from there. But it's certainly better than what I hoped would not come out of there, so.
I wanted to mention, I was there for some of the meeting, not the entirety, because I had the meeting after. It was refreshing to have the experts present, that the Solid Waste Authority is citing, and overall, I'm pleased, and I think it was worthwhile for us to be there. I know city attorney or city manager, I think two of our city attorneys were there.
They were.
I sat with Mr. Goran and Mr. Cirillo, and our city manager and assistant city manager, Bonilla, were there. They're, I'm sorry?
And our city engineer.
And our city engineer. I may just replay it, Commissioner, because there were some aspects of it that I missed. Some of it was so technical, it went way over me, way over mine. But overall, it was refreshing that they at least have a draft plan. There are a lot of questions, though. A lot of questions of which direction, and I think the key finding, Commissioner Rodriguez, maybe you disagree, was a change in behavior is basically what they were saying for Broward's one point nine million residents. That was the main component of their recommendation.
Through education.
Through education.
Through education.
It's a Herculean effort.
Yeah, I mean, look, I'm all for education, but, you know, you gotta take the garbage out. And at the end of the day, they have to find a way to deal with it. And so, you know.
We'll have opportunities very soon.
To get into that. Yeah, we will. Okay. Now, we're at reports to the city manager and city attorney?
I have no items, Mayor.
Mr. City Attorney, you have anything?
One quick item. As an outgrowth of the master plan and the Solid Waste Authority meeting, I advise you, and I'll re-advice you, that the joint meeting of the, under the chapter one sixty-four litigation between Coconut Creek, Deerville Beach, and Broward County, they've scheduled their joint body governmental meetings at one o'clock PM on August the twenty-eighth at the Governmental Center, and we will attend on your behalf, given the nature of the one sixty-four that we attended previously, in our attendance at the master plan review, all of which are connected, because we're just observing at the moment. We're not a player, we're not a party, but we, at your direction, are designated to be there for communication purposes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else?
That's it, Mayor. Thank you.
Commission items. Vice Mayor Hernandez, item forty-nine.
I am going to be as brief as I possibly can, because I'm starting not to feel well. So I apologize if I'm a little bit lethargic up here. I know that when I first became a Commissioner in May of last year, I was, a little bit later on, we had discussed, you know, taking up, a white paper was the wording that the mayor used on municipal communications. I took a little bit of a different tact, mainly because there's, every municipality has some kind of blueprint. They have some policy that they follow. Sometimes it's established by commission, and sometimes it's established by a committee and then established by the commission. It depends. My experience in Miami-Dade County, in order to change the communications plan, I brought in every PIO, PIO and com speak as Public Information Officer. Fire Department has one, police has one. Brought them all in, and we created it together, mainly because of the change in technology. This is twenty thirteen to twenty nineteen, twenty eighteen, and also because it needed to be unified, even if it was a very large government, like Miami-Dade was. When you had five airports, a seaport, a sheriff's office, and fire rescue, and emergency management, there had to be a little bit of unity. All of that was under the mayor in Dade. So I worked very closely on it, and when I looked at ours, I thought, look, there are some things that I really like, that the communications team has put together, but I wanted time to do this. I wanted to be here. It didn't need to be three hundred and sixty-five days, but I wanted to be here long enough where I could observe, I could review what we have. And first, let me start off by saying, I think, especially when it comes to social media, I absolutely love what Pembroke Pines Police does. media, I, I absolutely love what Pembroke Pines Police does with Amanda and, I'm sorry, Chief, I forget the names of your coms personnel in fire, I think you guys do a wonderful job. So I, I want to start off there by saying, our public safety departments, your communications are excellent. And I have always thought that as a resident, before I became a Commissioner, what, why I chose to take this, and I promise I'm not going to go on too long, I know we have to extend in nine minutes, why I chose to take that tack is basically saying, these are my thoughts on the existing communications plan. These are not, obviously, I don't write the communications plan, I don't have authority to do that and I'm not asking anyone to approve anything. There, in the plan, much of what is said repeatedly is it's a living document, that's the truth. In the world that we live in, one way of communicating changes weekly, I know Commissioner Rodriguez works in the industry as well, she knows this to be true and I'd love to hear her thoughts, but this was for a conversation starting, starter. That's why I'm recommending to actually have, and I know we just talked about, I'm sorry, like two or three workshops unrelated to this, I really do think it would be, excuse me guys, I really do think it would benefit the city commission, number one, to sit down in a workshop setting, probably in A101. With time, we had a very extensive agenda today, obviously, this is not the priority on that agenda, but for you all to have an opportunity to read through it, sit down, hear from our city communications director, sorry, look at their metrics, they have metrics when it comes to social media, they have metrics when it comes to the preparation and dissemination of press releases. Overall, though, one area that I did home in on and I do want to commend the city manager on, and this is just something that I think is part of the transition from a medium-sized city to being the second most populous in Broward County. I asked the city manager before I finished this, when, and he could put it under communications, he could put it under departments, I did want to feel better prepared as an elected official, before that as an appointed Commissioner, when I arrived at events. I do think that this body and future commissions should have more engagement on the communications end when it comes to if Commissioner Good is speaking at the charter school award ceremony like he was, Commissioner Good knows, A, and this sounds silly, but this is all, I promise you, in a communications plan, where to park, what the dress code is, when you arrive, when you speak, where in the program, who will be there, and suggested talking points. Talking points, you don't have to repeat them, but for example, I enjoyed the fact that when we arrived, you and I, Mayor, and you were there for a bit before you had your anniversary, I remember that you left, the charter school, high school graduation, we had, we had information prepared for us that said, you will shake 400, and we shook all of them, 437 hands that day, this is one of the largest graduating classes, those, those points are, in my view, very, very, very important to be disseminated to all of us, whether or not we are attending. I cannot attend every event, none of us can, we all work, except you, you're retired, God bless you, but we have, he does have a family, but they're adult girls now, so he.
A little bit less, yeah, why suffer?
That's a big part of what I did, that's a big part of what I put together here. These are suggestions, as I said, but I do think that as we grow, as we have a higher profile as a municipality, these are some common sense adjustments that we could make. I understand there may be differences of opinion, for example, I am someone that favors centralization. I, I can tell you, it wasn't the most popular decision I made. I think communications departments touch everything and should actually have a great deal of authority. I use this quick story, when I was with Miami-Dade, one of the.
Hold that one, hold that one second. I need a motion to extend the meeting beyond 11:30. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion, any from the public, all those that favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
During my tenure, one of the first things I did is I went with the fire department on an air rescue, helicopter air rescue. I spent another day in a sewer, it was beautiful, with the water and sewer department. I spent an evening with Miami-Dade PD. Why would I do that? It's because communicators touch every aspect of an organization, government, non-governmental, and that's why I hold them in such high esteem, it's not just what I do for a living. Your coms folks are the ones that they're forward-facing, they're the ones that need to be guiding a lot of the policy when it comes to how we face our, the public, how we provide information. I, I've seen, by the way, I want to be very clear, some positive changes, something for, for example, I, I love the video that communications put out for, I believe Mr. Manager was in the spring, for residents who have moved to the city, it was basically like a Pembroke Pines 101. I'd love to see more of that and, and promotion of the fact that that exists. I know that you, you may want to noodle on it over the summer, I really believe that a coms department should have further resources and a lot more of what is generated throughout the government, running through Mary Ann's team, because that's how important it is, in my view, to improve communication between ourselves and our residents and the general public. I think overall, we've done a, a pretty decent job as a city. It's just very difficult because of the nature of the environment that we're, we are currently in. That is why I chose to, rather than a more formal white paper, go through this plan. I will be very clear, I do want to see all of us in a room together for recommendations on a new policy, a new plan, that we would hopefully approve, once we all land on the same page and are okay with it, and would implement in the new fiscal year. That's why we're, I'm, I'm aiming towards August, I know you guys may hate me for making that recommendation because we have budget hearings and, or preparation for budget. I, I feel passionate about communications, particularly in municipal governments. It is a labor of love for me. I would like to, some, I would like our commission's support for, again, having this workshop on a date certain, after our summer recess, but coming in not, not that we come in unprepared, I mean, there's just a long agenda, so it would be very difficult to do it on a night like tonight, but come in with our ideas, perhaps tear mine apart and have your own, I don't know. But I'd like to begin those conversations in August so that we can come back and formally approve a, a plan, basically because as the policymaking body that is out there often, I mean, Commissioner Rodriguez is at every event, she has experiences, yes, but I'm saying, within her district and outside, she is out and she also performs, she's at events for Broward County, where she represents the city, it's not just the League of Cities. So everyone has a, an experience or a recommendation they would like to make, so that's the purpose of this. I don't expect you all to have read it, I think it would be a good, and leading into, I believe Commissioner Schwartz's item 50 on social media policy, that should be incorporated, in my view, into the overall coms policy, I don't think they need to be separate, social media is a vehicle for communication and for a lot of other things, but that's the main purpose of it. So I, I would appreciate someone's support, or all of your support, but someone who would second a motion that I will make at the appropriate time, Mayor, for this workshop, to review our communications plan and set the policy.
So, so let me, let me begin by thanking you. This, this, it did not surprise me that it would take this amount of time to do this because the undertaking that we gave you and the assignment that we gave you was very, very difficult. It was made easier by a communications team and by a city manager that was open to the discussion, that has brought us from a place where we hardly ever really communicated much at all, to a place where we're actually now doing that and we're, we're actually now having, you know, communications with, with, with the residents. And they appreciate it, they appreciate it tremendously because times have changed significantly. It used to be you had two, three newspapers in your driveway, that, those days are over, but when you read them, the easiest story, Joey and Janie walking to school, all three newspapers saying the same thing. Now you go on newspaper and one say Joey and Janie walking to school and the next one will say Joey barely tolerating Janie as they walk to school together and then the next one will say Joey and Janie just met after, totally different stories connected to one or two factoids, which are probably the least important aspects of the story. We are in a situation right now that is, is sort of mind-boggling. Never in the history of, of, of human beings has it been easier to get more information right off of this than ever before and yet, we have never been more divided by information and facts than ever before. It makes absolutely no sense, even the simplest things that used to go to a library and get the answer, today.
What's a library?
It's all over the place.
What's a library?
What's that all about? And there seems to be, and there seems to be a total sort of walking away from basic things that we were all taught, at least I know I was, as a child, which was, tell the truth, you know? Don't say stuff that you know is intended to intentionally mislead someone, or don't say things in a way that misleads them on purpose. And yet we're seeing a lot of that and so, here's the thing about democracy and it's the reason sort of that the press was given all of this leeway in the Constitution. Without an informed citizenry, democracy can't work, it just, it can't work. We have to agree on the facts if we're going to be voters and directors of our own future using our implement, which is, which is government, in order to get there. And doesn't that sort of explain an awful lot about the dilemma that, that, that we're currently in anyhow? Back here in Pembroke Pines, there's an awful lot that we need to communicate to residents, but that they also need to communicate to us. I'm a big believer in understanding where they're coming from based on what they say as a whole, not just one group of people over here or another group over there, or this neighborhood, or this building, or that street, but sort of taking the temperature of, of the, of the people and the, the businesses we serve in general. I read your whole piece and I think it's a wonderful, wonderful document that, that kickstarts what should be a very, very robust discussion. I don't think you're ever finished with a communication strategy, there's so many different components to it and so much of it bleeds over into management philosophy and how, and, and how you, how you operate. We live in a cynical world right now because people are imagining stuff that isn't even true. There was, there was a Facebook, oh, I forget what, what application it was on and they had, you know, because everyone has these rings, there was this young man there and he was knocking on the door and the, the caption was, who knows this person? Why is this person knocking on my door and whatever else? And, and it turned, and, and I saw him looking in my car and they had, they had a picture of this young man and whatever and it's, and it's, and at 400, I don't know how many comments later, we come to realize, he was knocking on the door because he saw that the lady left her window open. And as somebody who lived on the street, he said, he was knocking on, she didn't happen to be home, but her ring captured this image and, and the parents actually brought this kid over and said, is this the kid? Yes, that's the one. Why were you doing that? Ma'am, I saw your window was open, it was about to rain, I thought you'd appreciate my telling you to close your car window. But yet, it was pasted that this kid was, I don't know, Charlie Manson or, you know, Jeffrey Dahmer of, of the block because he was captured on a, on a, on a ring, ringing, knocking on somebody's door. This is what happens now when facts are not handled in, in, in a way that is comprehensive to what is going on. People jump to conclusions and they become cynical out of the need to self-protect. You can't govern in an environment like that, you just can't. You can't help, you can't do the job people send you into elected office for. So we have to do a better job of understanding what folks want, we have to do a better job understanding, explaining to them what they need, even if they don't sense that that's what they may want. We need to sort of explain better how we operate. During the bond discussion, I was amazed at how many people, Mr. Dodge, despite managing affordable housing programs for 30 years, had no clue we ever even did that and did not understand who these folks were and did not understand that we had been helping seniors, by and large, for 30 years from our own city, had no idea where these buildings were. We were so good at running these, these, these buildings well that they didn't even know they were there and when we told them, we want more, you want more, I didn't know, even know you had any. There, there's just so much that we have to build on now in a cynical world in order to be able to reach the next levels of, of, of things that we need to do. So I, I like the idea of having a workshop, I think that it, it should take a lot of different directions, I think we should take our time with it, we should not be rushed with it, but ultimately, there's, there are many, many stories that we have to hear and many, many stories that we have to tell and I don't like that when you come to the city, you feel sort of alienated and there's no like welcome kit like other communities have. Now I'm being told that there is, but I still haven't like, you know, I, I.
You mean for new residents?
Yeah, and, and for, for those that are here, there should be, there should be a, a thing on, on the internet that you.
A reengage like packet.
That you put.
Right, that's what you mean.
That you, that you push that says, what to do tonight in Pembroke Pines? It should come up. The chamber should be part of that discussion, should be, businesses, there should be part of that discussion, different things that go on, for all I know, for all I know that exists, I don't know.
I, I did want to say, one.
But people, I know, I know this is rambling, but it's, it's just so big that you can't help but to ramble. I really like the idea of doing the workshop.
And you ramble Shakespearean, it's fine. What I did want to say is although I would be proposing in a motion, a, a workshop, I think there's something, some things that we could do right now, including like tonight and asking administration, so for example, in Miami-Dade County Government, I used different clipping services so that every Monday through Friday, you received, and that's automated, it's, it's a fee, they pay, there's a, there's a media alert, anything that mentions whichever search terms you implement, you input it, it either came in at eight in the morning on Saturday and Sunday or, I'm sorry, Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM, Saturday and Sunday, 9:00 AM. And you could automate it for two days, for, for two times in a day. I think that is something that can be done for a very low cost, it's, it would be at the direction of, of the administration to, it would be their, their work to find that and that every elected official and, and. work to find that, and that every elected official and, and, this is very important because this is not just about elected officials, it's about the folks that run the government as administration, department directors and deputy directors.
It sounds, it sounds like, it, it sounds like a really good idea, but it needs to be agendized and give the public the opportunity at twenty till twelve. It's not the time. Let's, let's, let's do this in August.
So here's what I'm wondering.
I'm happy to support the workshop. I, I just need some help, Vice Mayor. I, I read the document, it's very comprehensive. I would like to be able to digest it and know, are we going to tackle pages one through ten or twenty through fifty?
I'd like to tackle them all when we get there.
But what I'm saying is, is so that we can have a robust conversation. If we can have some multiple workshops on the document, if you believe it would be best for us to break it into two or three series and then wrap it up because we're going to need to get staff feedback, we're going to have to ask the manager what he can support.
I agree. One of the things that would help me is, is having, I, I always learn well from, by examples. So if there are like some best practices in, in this field, in, in, in government locally, I'd like to see some product examples. Because we have, we have, we have people who are capable of, of one-upping it, and what we need to do is see what else other people are doing.
Who are you giving that assignment to, me or that?
No, I'm not, I, you've done your assignment. If you want to take on more work, I can't think of anyone more suited, but I can't, I won't embarrass you.
So, so staff generally loves this meeting because you know what happens tomorrow? There's no meeting and they actually get to spend time with their families until August. So I would not want to task anybody on this campus to do anything before August. I want them to enjoy the summer break.
Here, here's, you guys have to give me direction here on what you'd want me to put into a motion. I'd, I'd love to hear also from Commissioner Rodriguez, but wha- whenever she, she speaks and after, I think Commissioner Good may speak after, I'd like direction because I do think we need, I, I'm, I'm fine with, I can talk about communications work two or three times, that's perfectly fine. I could do two or three workshops, I don't care. But we'd have to assign a date, we'd have to look at dates more because we all have our own schedules. August is also back-to-school time, my kids are returning. And I, I, I think throughout the summer, if you guys approve, I'd like to work with administration on setting the agenda for that day.
Okay.
Or those days.
Yeah, just, I, I have no issue with that. Just make it digestible so that we can have the ability for, for us, you know, to have dialogue.
Right.
And again, I just don't want to task them with a July assignment.
I can do it as long as, I, I can do it, we have time.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Thank you. I read through the document. I have a couple of quick notes that I would like to expand on when we do have a workshop because number one on my notes is that we need to have a workshop on this. A quick comment on adding new social media platforms. I saw Blue Sky and, and another, and I think we should ha- hold on implementing anything new until we see what are, what the market share, how many users in the area, that kind of stuff. It's just a quick comment. On that, the use of sponsored posts and putting in the budgets, social media is very cheap to advertise on, making sure that we are considering that because we could have, for example, put out a sponsored post regarding the AP classes, the cut on that. We did a really good job internally in doing that through our charter schools, but that is something that we can use. It's a very low-cost effort to bring out the advocacy that I believe we all innately should push a little bit harder on. We talk about it with our lobbyists, we talk about it with Senator Sharif as she was here, but I think those are the things in that part of the activism and advocacy really needs to be pushed forward. And I think social media or any kind of media outlet is a really good way of doing that. We could have done, and, and I don't know if we did or did not, a news release on the AP classes, things like that, because that is something that impacts heavily our population, especially because it's correlated to our educational system. And so, that through sponsored posts, through, that is just an example of the advocacy we could do, do through these channels.
Okay. I, I wanted to mention that would also be a budget discussion because we'd have to direct...
And, and it's a very small one. I don't want administration to get scared. Social media sponsorships and ads are, are quite cheap in red, in consideration to other kinds of media ad buys. The dollars-at-work portion, I don't know if that was previously there or something that was implemented through this rewrite, but I think that that is key, and I mentioned it a little bit earlier, it's really important to have that visibility of where our public funds go, especially again, in, in part of the conversation about property taxes. We saw it a lot when the bond was in question in March. People truly have no idea where their taxes go. And I think that that's why there was a lot of conspiracy as to what we were planning on doing with the funds. Making sure that we're using the tools that we currently have, including our, our communications platforms, to educate our residents, I think is a vital priority of the city commission because without the buy-in and the trust of the community, we really can't do anything moving forward. Additionally, I did see that there was a position for, or at least the proposal of a position for...
Another budget item.
Uh, another, yes, another budget item. I would like us to consider merging that with an intergovernmental affairs position as I had mentioned when we did our visioning sessions. I think a, a public information officer is really important, but I don't know if it fully encompasses some of the things that we would like to do. If we are going to be this wagon of advocacy, I don't know how, how else to put it, but if we're going to be able to push this and, and bring the services to our residents, as the mayor was saying, and have that conversation with them rather than at them, I think that would be a really good part because, for example, I know we get emails from BCPS and we do focus a lot on our charter schools because we run our charter schools, but I think sometimes we tend to forget that they are, are traditional public schools here too. We need that, that partnership to be a little bit stronger, in my opinion. We need the partnership for the county to be a little bit stronger. And in conversations with the, the solid waste authority, all of those things, we do have to be a bigger player in the county as a whole from the city of Pembroke Pines, and I think an intergovernmental affairs position builds on that even that much further because I've personally been putting out newsletters called Friday Resources, Resources is Friday, that I do on, on my own time personally, but I'm trying to get out to the residents that I can reach. The resources not only that the city provides, but that the county, that the state, that other partner organizations provide, and I think that that needs to be stepped up a little bit, maybe on our own personal dime because doing it through mail chipping, it costs money, or things like that, but that should be part of the conversation as well.
I think that's a great recommendation, especially because, yes, we interact with so many different governmental bodies, as you said, having an intergovernmental person that has a public oversight or designation, I guess you could say, as a PIO, although anyone can serve as, as PIO. The fire department has their fire, their PIOs, police has their own. So I, yeah, I'm with you.
So I'm sensing, I'm sensing an agreement that, you know, based on what you've heard, you and the manager have a conversation on how to structure this...
He loves when I just come to his office.
Yes.
He loves it. He loves it.
He, he does. And have this conversation, structure the workshop meeting, and even if it's, even if it's a half-day thing...
I'll buy you lunch.
I know, I know he, he'll put out some sandwiches or, you know. We can all just brown bag it or whatever it is. And we'll, we'll go through this and let's, let's see how much of this we can get done.
No, I'm there. I just, and to, do I have to motion or what are...
No, I think we can do this by consensus. I think, I think, I think what you've heard is, is pretty much...
So the consensus is that I work with our manager to determine at least two dates, potentially three for a workshop in August, all based on communications plan.
Like a morning, that kind of thing, and then let's, let's, let's knock out as much as, and then, and then let's see where that takes us.
Okay.
All right, we have one more commission item, and then I have a quick item to do on old business. Commissioner Schwartz?
Thank you, Mayor, and, and again, I'm, I'm just looking for consensus. Lots of, I'll read into the record, review, the city's social media policy discussion, possible actions, direct the city attorney's office to update the city policy to capture new social media platforms while maintaining full public access in accordance with the city policy and Florida state law. I've attached, thank you, Mary Ann, for the policy and the backup. It's been a while, Mayor, since, Commissioner, since we approved it. It needs a legal review to make sure that we're still complying with all the changes and all the court changes and all the public access stuff, and I just want to just give it to the city attorney and have him bring back any revisions that they deem to be necessary based on the document that's in the, that's in the backup, that's all.
Okay, thanks.
So just looking for consensus on that.
Yeah, I think that's fine. I mean, the city attorney, that's a review that you feel comfortable doing?
Absolutely, Mayor. Thank you.
All right, thanks. On old business, I, I want to wish everyone a great July. You will have us out of your hair. It looks like we won't have any emergency meetings, and let's hope it stays that way. Obviously, if we have an emergency, we'll call it. But in, in August, Mr. Manager, I hope that we can put together a, a series of discussions to put the strategic plan back on the front burner. Picking up where we left off, there are projects that we can move. There are strategies to move the strategic plan. We should start figuring out a reporting structure for the, for the, for the items that are covered under the plan that we didn't need to fund. We should come up with some funding options for the city commission to, to approve for those that, that, that need funding. We may have to scale back some of our plannings. We may have to prioritize some of the things that we wanted to do, but there's work to be done in the city, and just because we didn't get the, the, the pathway that we had originally set forward, doesn't mean that we don't have work to do and projects to, to advance and, and means to advance them. So let's, let's aim for, please, August, to begin having those discussions. I look very forward to seeing, from you, I think we all do, some specific recommendations on how we should be moving forward. And take some time during, during July to put those together, and then let's see what we can discuss in, in August. Is that something what, that sounds workable to you?
Yes.
Commissioners, are we all okay with that?
Yeah.
All right. Well, that said, thank you very, very much. This meeting is adjourned.